Okay, good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this reconvened meeting of Pittsburgh City Council's budget hearings for today, Monday, forgive me, I'm still on a Thanksgiving time, December the 2nd. We have the pleasure of having the Honorable Mayor Paduto with us, his Chief of Staff, Dan Gilman. We are joined by Councilwoman Gross. I am Councilman Kraus. I will be chairing this afternoon's budget hearing at the mayor's office. Following the mayor's office, we will then have our budget hearings for the Office of Equity, the City Controller, the Commission on Human Relations, and the Department of City Planning. But for now, we have a presentation, I believe first, from our Budget Director, Bill Urbannick.
A very brief one, sir. Thank you so much, Mr. President. The mission of the Office of the Mayor is to provide leadership, strategic direction, and administrative oversight to all aspects of city government operations, and to develop and implement policy reflective of the goals and priorities of the citywide community. There are, in the 2020 budget highlights, the total budget for the mayor's office will be $1,461,000. That's an increase of $114,000, or eight and a half percent. There's a total of 14 full-time positions, plus funding for an intern. Salary and position changes of note, the Deputy Chief of Staff that was added in 2019 is removed, $88,351 savings. There's an addition of a Chief Economic Development Officer at $112,000, and minor raises for four administrative positions totaling $20,000. No changes of note to any non-salary subclasses. The mayor does have a capital budget line item, as does council. The mayor's Community Development Block grant unspecified local option amount for this year is $175,000. That's a decrease of $125,000. Of course, the mayor and the mayor's offices oversees 98.5% of the operating budget, the entirety of the capital budget, 95% of the trust funds. The five-year fiscal, financial fiscal forecast is attached on the back of this front sheet. We will go over this a couple times throughout the budget hearings, especially when we get to O and B and finance. But I, we left it there for any questions on any specific long-term changes. And with that, we should welcome the mayor.
Okay. Thank you. I just want to make note that we have been joined by Councilmember Erica Strasburger. And welcome, Mayor. The floor is yours.
Mr. President, as the Director stated, the number of employees within our office will remain at 14. The major addition, position we did not fill this year will be a Chief Economic Development Officer. With the prior Chief of Staff, Kevin Ackland, played both roles. We will be hiring a CEDO to begin in January. The idea is, is that the job will coordinate the efforts between the new Director of the URA. We're hiring a new Director in planning. We've hired a new Director for Economic Development, excuse me, at the Housing Authority, and we're in the process of hiring a new Director of Land Bank to be able to coordinate all of that in a new economic development initiative. On the specifics of the budget and any of the changes, I'd turn it over to the Chief of Staff to just go through those numbers.
Great.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to reiterate the Budget Director's comments, so the Deputy Chief of Staff, Majestic Lane, merged into Deputy Chief of slash Chief Equity Officer and took Valerie McDonald-Roberts' budgeted line item in the Office of Equity. So that's why it's being eliminated. It really was eliminating the other job. As the mayor said, the CEDO search process is complete. We anticipate a January start for that role. We're combining that with Kinzie Casey, who's the new Chief Operating Officer, which is the job formerly held by Guy Costa. So Kinzie will oversee basically DOMI, PWSA, Parks, Public Works, and Parking Authority. CEDO will have Housing Authority, URA, kind of the permitting side of DOMI, PLI, Planning, Housing Authority, Land Bank. So kind of everything will flow through those two. And then you have Chief Lane, from the equity perspective, making sure that all of that work goes through the equity lens and reports up to me, and I report to the mayor. As the Budget Director noted, there are a couple very small raises in the admin lines, and there is paid some salary for an intern, as we now pay our interns, rather than free internships in the mayor's office, which I think is a good move nationally, to make sure we're paying our interns properly. The only other thing I will say, as announcement, I don't know if councilmembers know this or not, Assistant Chief of Staff Grant Gitlin will be leaving the administration at the end of the year. He's gotten another great opportunity that he'll be moving on for. He will be greatly missed. I know he is the main liaison for council, and many others, and has served the administration admirably. We'll miss him, but it's a great opportunity for him and his family for a new career. So with that, we will likely be presenting some sort of amendment during the council budget process to address it. We're not sure that we'll replace the position in kind, but we'll maybe split it up and actually have someone more dedicated just to council and the legislative process to announce in the coming days as well. So there may be an amendment coming from us, just as a heads-up related to that shift.
Good, thank you. Councilwoman Gross, I was going to begin with you.
Excuse me, Dan.
So would you like me to move on? Or, yeah, why don't we just go around the table and also let the record reflect that Councilwoman Harris has joined us as well. And Councilwoman Gross, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome, Mr. Mayor, and Chief Gilman. So I want, if you don't mind, to go back to this idea of this position for economic development, because I know that it's something that we've heard you talk about in the past, both in, you know, the public conversation and in private conversations, about this kind of realignment with the URA, because we just had their hearing a short while ago. And I was happy to see so much more program area and activity in the kind of micro enterprise stuff and small business stuff. But I noticed that those capital, those budget lines are zeroed out for city funding, the way they presented it. And I wanted to kind of give you an opportunity to add your perspective on how this reshifting works. I mean, there's been, you know, five, six years ago, we talked about completely overhauling the URA, and this is the most significant shift that we've made so far. And just so you know, if you probably didn't see it, I said, "I think that day has passed where the URA's main function should be major development." And that I would like to see more robust activity in funding the wealth building of actual Pittsburgh residents and Pittsburgh businesses, right? And that is a very different, is a very different function. So can you speak for us about how these various parts are fitting together differently?
So there will still be the component of the URA which works on major projects. I mean, there's still going to be the 28 acres. There's the proposal with Millcraft down by the West End Bridge. There's still these major developments that the URA will be the lead economic development agency for. But the idea of what will be needed for the next 10 years for the city of Pittsburgh centers more around entrepreneurship, Main Street, business development, and housing. In addition, workforce development, opportunities to try to get the workers from the city to be the workers that will be able to take advantage of the jobs for tomorrow. So that refocusing will come through restructuring. The candidate that we selected to head the URA comes from a background in Kansas City of changing that economic development department and making the cultural changes that were necessary as well. We're not talking about overhauling staff, we're just talking about having different roles for them to play. The coordination of that effort has to be done hand-in-hand with city government. We own the properties in many cases. It has to work through the Finance Department in order to be able to get the property sales to happen. We need to be able to do more with the Land Bank legislation and with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We have all the pieces. What we don't have is an organization right now that can fulfill the mission. And so that structural change has to come from not only within the URA, but also the different things that we were talking about, a new Director of Development at the Housing Authority, a new Economic Development Officer to coordinate. And basically, the goal will be to work with a upgraded planning department in taking neighborhood plans and putting them to bid. We started this process in the Hill with the Center Avenue Parcels. We put together the parcels, we put together the procedure for developers, and we adopted the community's master plan and said, "What can you do?" And developers who bid on the project came from down the street to around the country. And now the community's in the process of determining what the best ideas are. And with that, there's the opportunity to bring several of the developers together. Big Tom's Barber Shop was one of the people who applied, and they want to take back the historic Ham's Barber Shop, and not only restore it, but create affordable housing as part of it as well. There's a very easy way that they could partner with some of the more established developers, see that part of the community's plan be put in place, and see that whole section of Center Avenue in the Hill come back as a community-based neighborhood development, entrepreneurship, locally-owned, revitalized area. So the idea is to do that 10 times every year, to be able to not only look at one neighborhood, but at least 10 different areas where we have plans, where we have property, and to be able to sort of turn it the other way around. Instead of a urban redevelopment authority that waits for someone to knock at the door and say, "We're interested in these parcels," that we actually are marketing it and finding developers to do the community goal.
And just to acknowledge, I said it a little more harshly, where I said, "We're not the economic development agency for the four Brooklyn developers, or Cleveland, or Chicago, or Minneapolis. If we should be investing our public dollars in actual residents of the city of Pittsburgh." If out-of-town developers are here and making a profit, which they are, they're taking more out than they are in, even if the, just taking title to the property, that it's now their wealth and not our wealth. So this, I'm very excited and eager to see more. We also heard testimony from the Urban Redevelopment Authority that their pilot microloan project funded 98% African-American women, I think, of the applicants of the 30-some projects they did. They were almost entirely African-American women. I might have gotten that percentage wrong, but it was very high. And that those are, they're all succeeding and repaying their loans, and that's the way. It's not profitable for the URA, right? No microloan programs that I know of are around the nation. They only are usually ever 80% self-sustaining, right? And so it does take supporting them for them to be able to fulfill their mission. But it's a mission that's long overdue.
Yeah, before you jump in, I just want to give credit where it's due. Diamante Walker got that program started in East Liberty and off the ground within months. And the goal is, is that all of the entrepreneurs that are working in that shop will eventually have their own shop. And it will cycle through. It's sort of using the example of, what's in that place down in the strip?
Small and Galley?
Small and Galley.
Yeah, so you incubate the retail.
Right. But instead, we're looking at the heart of East Liberty in having a storefront to get their businesses started. They're also being given assistance and training in order to operate their own business as well. It's not just set up shop here, it's set up shop, learn, and the entrepreneurs themselves are very ambitious. So it's a good program. We're talking and have been in conversations with Councilman Lavelle, not only to create a similar program within the Hill and the Center Avenue area, but also on the 28 acres itself, and bringing that type of an entrepreneurship incubator to that site.
I was just going to add on the budget piece. I think the data I heard today is 97% of the microloans have been repaid, which is a remarkable percentage, which also allows not quite self-sustainability, but getting close, that you don't have to fully fund every year because you build off of it.
Right, and so, and it's a revolving loan fund.
Right, exactly.
So if we added more capital, we would actually just be adding to the total capital base that is available for the loans. And they're assets. They're negative assets on the balance sheet, but they're not giveaways. So that's, I'm fully supportive, I have a deep history with this kind of stuff. I was working at microloans in the 1990s. And so I'm very, very excited that we've made that move here.
No, it's great, and I'm not sure what presentation, I didn't see the presentation they gave, but there are several hundred thousand, I can't remember off the top of my head, I don't have in front of me, into the Center for Innovation Entrepreneurship under Tom Link, where the money can be fungible to that. Obviously, we're hugely supportive, as you are, of that initiative. I will point out, though, just quickly, because it does come up, since you brought it up, with, with URA funding, the challenge we have, and it's going to be a growing challenge, worse and worse each year, is city budget can come from three places, basically, CDBG, bond financing, and Pago. Bond financing cannot be used at the URA 99.9% of the time by federal IRS tax law. CDBG is dwindling each and every year. And Pago, if you look at the five-year plan, by 2024 is down to $2.5 million. Unfortunately, in the past, the URA structured a budget around a higher Pago than is going to exist, which is why the new Director's challenge in the HRNA report, and Councilman Lavelle's worked closely with us, is how do you become self-sustaining? How do you take the models? I will also point out Pittsburgh's URA is the only economic development agency in America that operates this way. In most cities, either, as you have long fought for, they're long-term leases, or in Boston, they sell it to, you know, Dan Lavelle, and then when Dan Lavelle sells it to Deb Gross, the city takes a piece of that sale each time it sells, they're taking a piece of the profit as the market grows. So there are different models, we'll have to figure out the Pittsburgh model, but relying on CDBG and Pago is not a sustainable revenue source. And unfortunately, there were some budget decisions made long before, people at this table that set a structure that wasn't the right structure, and as the mayor said, thanks to Deputy Director Walker's leadership, and Sam Williamson and the board, we're headed in the right direction there, but it is, has been a challenge.
This is probably not something that councilmembers have often said, but I would not, and I have said it before, that some of that staffing of economic development activity could be in the operating budget at the city, right? Which would maybe allow some of that flexibility, right? So there's not a requirement for a lot of this type of activity that it be at the authority. So that's something that I think is worthy of future conversations as well.
I will just point, we are in the process of beginning to think about talking about, we are not drafting, in MOU, similar to what we did kind of with PWSA with the co-op, of what are things the city can do? For instance, we started to do demo for the URA. Because of the amount of demo we do, we get a much better price than the URA does. So what if PLI just does all the URA demo and they go onto that? What can the URA do in return? And what are those give and takes that we can do for each other that gets a better bang for the buck for taxpayers, rather than this back-and-forth where the URA charges a 10% fee and we charge this fee? It doesn't make sense anymore. So we're, hopefully, we'll have something to you this year, but it will probably be Q3 or Q4 before there's any kind of movement on that.
Planning as well, I mean, that there seems to be sometimes parallel planning, which is not necessary. We, that is our authority, as the city of Pittsburgh, to do our own city planning. And so we don't have to cede that activity to an outside authority. And that is a topic that Ms. Harris has brought up many times. So I'll stop there, but thank you for filling out that picture a little more. I think we're going to continue to see it become more filled out.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Let the record reflect that we have been joined by Councilmembers Lavelle, Kail Smith, and Burgess. And I'm just going to come around the table, so Councilman Lavelle, would you like the floor next?
Well, I'll probably come back, but while I'm at it, one, I just want to actually thank you. One, I think it's going to be really tremendous to have a Chief Economic Officer. We were sort of having this conversation even when the URA was here. That have someone in the mayor's office, leading economic development for the city, working alongside the new Director for the URA, I think is really going to be healthy and a great relationship, so I want to thank you for moving on that. Two, I want to thank you for creating the Office of Equity. As you're well aware, there's a lot of work that we have to do in this city. I think Mr. Lane is, has been doing a phenomenal job, and I look forward to working with you as we move forward. As you're well aware, we committed to being all in the city, committed to doing additional policies that help us advance as a city, and I just look forward to working with you on that. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Strasburger.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and for presenting us with a budget that I think really reflects the values of the city and your goals that you're looking to attain. And my only kind of comment, and you're welcome to respond however, however you'd like, is that when it comes to the public's participation in helping to craft the budget, I think that I give OCA, the Office of Community Affairs, a lot of credit for doing amazing work with the resources that they have, the potholes and pierogies, and growing the public participation opportunities from what it once was to what it is today is impressive. I think that there's work that could be done beyond what we have currently, and I don't know what it looks like, whether it's a dedicated person whose job is dedicated to participatory budgeting year-round, or using the deliberative democracy model with representatives, a representative Congress from each district or each neighborhood, to really help to inform the budget so that people are represented by not just councilmembers and not just those who work for the city, but neighborhood leaders, or whatever it might look like, to really help to inform the budget in a way that is not just reflective of what we think people want, but really uses the voices of those who are on the ground feeling the impacts of it, and is inclusive in that way. Because I think so much of it is the process in addition to the end goal. You can have the best, most inclusive budget in the end, and if the process isn't exactly, doesn't feel inclusive, then it almost doesn't matter to a lot of people. So I would be happy to be part of that conversation, if that's something that you are at all interested in pursuing, but it would, it would be, it would be really wonderful, I think, to see us be a leader in that regard in future years.
So over the past couple of years, we've sort of gone into a pattern of how we put together a budget. And I first want to say, I agree with you, there always can be more participation. The three areas that come together is the community input, council, and then the departments themselves. And with, a lot of times, depending on what department it is, they, the levels differ. Councilmembers will be very involved and will want to be involved in public works, in parks, in a lot of the different parts of what you see as not functioning at the way or the level that you want to see. Permits, or inspections, or demolitions, and, but there's rarely time where there's a deep discussion about the Finance Department, or parts of HR, you know? And certainly, when we have the community meetings, nobody's standing up and talking about payroll. So it really depends department upon department, and where the community interest, council interest, and then where Director interest is. There's always, for every single department, far more requests than is possible. And so it really becomes a battle of attrition, trying to cut back from what the requests are to get to a point where we can afford it. I think that, you know, I've met with community organizers who have hired the same consultant that we hired for the URA, HRNA, to help to put together a community process, using the best examples from across the country. And there's some really good ideas that they've offered, and I would ask, as you look at that, to engage with them as well, and to see, you know, where we can do more and do better, other than the meetings that we have with the community and being out there. How does it become a 12-month engagement? How does it become very simple to get online and to be able to get the information? One of my favorite widgets that we've adopted has been the tax receipt. And when you give somebody the tax receipt, they're amazed, because it shows down to a penny exactly where their tax dollars are going. And it breaks it down by department, it's adjusted every year based upon the approved budget, and it can show you exactly how much goes to every different part of city government.
Agreed. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. Councilwoman Harris.
Sure. Good morning.
Hi.
I had to look at this and smile, because it looks like every other mayor's, where you only have the 14 staff that have to do with your office, but yet you do have them in other departments. That's how you do get the community input and everything else that you're working with, correct?
For our office, we've divided out the Bureau and created the...
It's the Office of Equity?
Office of Equity. So those folks, and that will come up as a separate budget next, do operate under the mayor's office. The Office of Community Affairs, though, does not, and that's why it's located between the mayor's office and council. They are a part of the planning department. Their input goes back to neighborhood planners directly from the community meetings, and they also serve as troubleshooters. So when there's complaints about an abandoned property or something else, they then reach out to all the other departments. But they have been told, and we've gone through a lot of different people, to always state that they work for the city of Pittsburgh and not the Office of the Mayor.
Ah, they do, but, but they still do what the others have done over the years for the last seven, eight mayors that I've worked with. They don't usually bring in the same, I guess because I'm at the council meetings, they don't put in for council at that time. They just do the mayor's office, but that's okay. I'm not saying it's a bad idea, I'm just saying, this is the way it's basically always worked. My concern is, when I look at public safety, and particularly police, number one, I think they should be paid more, because they were paid higher than anyone else in Allagany County. And now they seem to be one of the most, the lowest starting officers. But yet, we're still losing them. I mean, we lost them under Luke, you know, we're still losing them. And sometime, we have to start bringing those officers up to where they belong, so they want to be here, instead of out in North Hills or somewhere else, because no one trains their police like we do. And I was wondering between, well, starting with police, yes, we have, we are lower on how many people are murdered, but I don't believe we're, we're lower in those that have been shot. And we're seeing that in the neighborhoods, that violence, and I, I like what you have right now, where you're actually keeping that number at 900, but you're going to be going over it, such as right now, I think we're somewhere around 100 more. And I'm talking, not the ones that are still learning, that are going out there with a police officer, but those that are actually... but those that are actually, you know, hired by the city and are full-fledged police, and had all the training they need. So, I do like what's happening there. But the violence that we're still seeing in the neighborhoods is a real concern. So, I'm not sure if, on all three shifts, we're still having the number of police officers needed. Now, Northside has back, and I didn't know if I had to give back my little paramedic wagon. If you remember, you were on council when I, they gave me that, and he took a shift off of me. Now that we have the whole paramedic stations, both 10 and 4, that's very good. And they're happy, and we're going to have them for a long time. And I think our fire, I'm not sure, we done with them?
Yes.
We're done with them. So, I haven't asked them if they're happy or not yet. But I'm assuming they wouldn't settle unless they were happy. But the police, the police, I'm still very concerned about. And we probably need them more than ever. And why the violence? Why the guns? There was a day people used their fists, or slapped each other around or something. And now we're at that age with, you know, anything but weapons such as guns. It's, you know, it's really hurting this city. And the shortage of the crossing guards, that's a real issue, too. I know that the city, the school district employs them. But there have been some very, very dangerous corners that the crossing guards are supposed to, you know, be there. But they retire, and then there's no one. So, that's a real concern. And I think we started losing them, well, not losing them, but those that would, once they lost their medical, one pension and things like that, they, you know, they're just not coming out for those hours that they work a day.
Just on the crossing guards, the city employs them. They're within the police budget. We have 63 budgeted, sorry, I can't read, 63, oh, plus 33, so 96 part-time, and then seven full-time budgeted. We are currently in negotiations with them, and our goal is to make more of those full-time, which we think will attract. We have countless vacancies, so they're budgeted, but we just can't attract the candidates like we used to. And obviously, we wouldn't shift to full-time to anyone who's currently part-time and wants to stay that way. But as they retire, we think if we go more full-time crossing guards, we'll attract more candidates, because I think we strongly agree, we're incredibly short, and we are in negotiations on their contract right now.
We're also looking at the possibility of recruiting younger people right out of high school, who want a career in public safety, as they begin to take some of their college courses, getting that full-time position as a crossing guard, and then working to the point to be able to apply to be a EMT, or a firefighter, or a police officer. We think we can do a couple of things. Number one, have people from the city who know the city, applying to be public safety officials, and also create diversity by recruiting from our schools.
That would be good. But if we start giving them something that they want to stay for, is something that's really important. And I probably hear that more on the public safety than anything. And the danger that we have, I was just talking to the URA about the abandoned houses, and a lot of them could be fixed up. If you watch the news, you'll see, and it's City View, not Spring Hill, but it's Spring Hill and City View together. The media just can't tell the difference. That we had that three alarm fire, that, did you see it?
Yeah.
And those are the kinds of things that I don't want to see happening. And the other is historic property. I really don't want to see, you know, historic properties taken down. And it wasn't this city, it was the URA that took three of them down. You've got to listen to a larger population of people on areas that belong to the whole Northside. And then, public works. Public works is another one that, I don't know, do we need more workers or more quality work being done? Because between the weeds and, you know, we don't even, well, we have some of the leaves in some areas. But the potholes and asphalt, instead of using and keep paying for companies that are, we're paying the overhead of, is there any thinking of either putting an asphalt plant in, or the asphalt plants that are movable, that you can move neighborhood to neighborhood in order to get the quality that we got when we had our own people doing it? They knew exactly when they came down a street, which way the water should flow, instead of flowing towards the houses now, and getting into people's basements, before they knew how to really get into it. And it's because they were around a while. And it's hard work to do that job, but it would save us a heck of a lot more money, and we could get more streets done.
We looked, when Paul Legger was the finance director, at the cost of building our own asphalt plant. I believe, I'd have to go back to read the report, but I believe that the way that we could leverage the most would be to partner with the county. If we were to do a city-county, and they would use part of it for what they needed, and we would use our asphalt for the city streets, the upfront costs of what it would cost to do it could be made up. Otherwise, it's a long-term process to be able to make up the financial difference, based upon the cost of it.
I guess the problem I see with that is, we are part of the county. And the county is not doing for the city as much as they do for the suburbs around us. The city would be better off if we did, and we pay. You know, you pay, you pay, we all pay the same as everyone else does. But I would think that the county would have to take the bigger load there, and give this city what the city really deserves. But there also are the portable, portable asphalt plants. And if we're going to do something like that, at least trying to get the cost done, somebody must have turned the television on.
I just wanted to hear it one more time before you... Sorry.
Did she doubt it? She doubted. She doubted. I cannot believe she doubted my number, as I'm sitting here trying to talk to the mayor of the city of Pittsburgh. Shame on you. And parks, I think we have a terrific guy there. He's got a lot of good ideas and a great department. Speaking of the animals, I did talk to Dave about it, but they're going to need some more training because of what's happening within the city. I just put in a reptile piece of legislation, and I was at the zoo, and reptile expos, and everything else, and talking to many people on it. But things are changing, and people are changing. You know, it's not just dogs and cats anymore. It's not even just raccoons and groundhogs and rabbits, but...
Snakes.
You know, it's poisonous snakes. It's poisonous snakes. It's alligators, it's crocodiles, it's, you know. But they really do need, and they do not have the supplies at this time, even for the black snakes, and when they get the gardener snakes. Usually they don't have anything on that they can't get out of. So, I just think they need a little bit more help. Naturally, I think they need a little more help.
So, somebody was telling me, I can't remember who, but they were with their child down at the steps by PNC Park, you know, hot summer day. And a guy came up with a sack and brought his snakes out, so that they could cool down in the nice cold. Like, I would be at the top of PNC Park if I was sitting in that water, and somebody just let loose...
Just left them loose.
Just some, yeah. But apparently, the children liked it. And so, yes, people do have different pets now.
Yes. Well, there's a lot of harmless, harmless snakes. But, you know, it's the ones that people are bringing in. Well, with the internet and how to be able to buy, that's what seems to be the problem. But all the little guys, that's what I think we need more of. And if you call police officers, the little guys, we do need more on the streets.
We are scheduled for three more classes next year. Our goal is to keep that commitment. 9:50 right now with 32 in class.
I was just, I think, 9:89 when you count the cadets.
And then, we have three classes next year. And the goal, I've said this publicly before, so it's not a surprise, the goal is to create a seventh zone, to be able to get to the number of officers, so we can create, looking at what Pittsburgh is going to look like in 10 years from now, a zone specifically for the strip district, downtown, the north shore of the Northside, and the Southside. And so, that becomes an 18-hour zone, and we staff it accordingly. And we stop taking officers out of the neighborhoods for Penguin games, or Steeler games, or Pirate games, or partying on Carson Street. And those officers are trained to deal with the problems that come around with the 18-hour zone. And then the other zones remain, and they focus more on the neighborhoods.
Okay.
We're going to have to have a lot more officers to be able to get there, though.
Right. But we have to be able to pay them, too, to keep them, you know, from leaving, so that there are old officers in place to help the younger officers. Right now, it's getting very, very thin. So, you know, you do need the old timers to help the younger ones on. And when I was president of council, that's what really opened up my eyes, going to the pension meetings, and just seeing how many officers were leaving. It's a concern.
I think, in all likelihood, obviously, I can't say anything with certainty, you'll see a new police contract before the end of the year. All signs point to that being completed before the end of the year. And that we'll come back to council, obviously, to amend the budget to reflect that. But also then to, you know, we've made the pledge to the leadership, that of course, if officer salaries go up, then commanders have to, and sergeants, or not sergeants, but commanders, et cetera, and same in the paramedics, that the white shirts, you have to adjust. So, we would amend those. But we want to make sure that the union gets the contract first, before anything else is done. But I think that will likely happen in December. And I'd say, on a positive note, we have a record number of officers who have left coming back to the force. The mayor swears in, you know, from time to time, because they don't have to go through the training again, so they don't go through the academy. But it's a record number of officers who were attracted to the higher salary or different things, but realized that they really missed what it meant to be a city police officer, and the opportunities to be in specialized forces, and work in the neighborhoods they care about. And so, we're seeing officers come back, who were here, left, and coming back, which is a positive sign as well.
Yeah. But there's not as many that's leaving, that are coming back. And there are, there are those that are coming back. Some of them wanted to come back because they had an elderly parent that they wanted to be with. And they could not live outside the city. But now, unfortunately, they can't. I don't know. I said, unfortunately, when it's school, when the teachers were able to move outside the city, too. Okay. I think that's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kell Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. It's good to see you here, Chief of Staff Gilman. And she's going to call my phone, I think, no. Mine doesn't work.
No, I would not do that.
Anyway, I just, I want to first acknowledge Grant and Gitlin and all the work that he... I was devastated when I found out that he was leaving, because he has been really so helpful to us. I think what I like about him most is that he doesn't seem like he likes politics very much, but he likes getting stuff done, and he got things done. So, I just want to thank him for his work, and wish him well with the Penguins. Okay, Grant, I can see his duck at his head back there in the audience. But I want to talk to you a little bit about the public-private partnerships. I mean, you mentioned it in your budget hearing, your address. And I just want to say, you know, I philosophically have concerns with this. And I feel like it sometimes pushes the public, and especially council members, out, which is the voice of the public, with some of the partnerships, including with the parks and some of the things that, you know, they had concerns with. I think we always agree on the end result. I think it's getting there, how we, I, you know, don't always see things similar as you do. Could you talk a little bit about what you think with the public-private partnerships? Is there a limit to what you're willing to do with the public-private partnerships? Is there an endless possibility? I mean, tell me what your thoughts are.
So, there's definitely a limit.
Okay, that's what I need to hear.
First part of it is, we should never lose the asset, whatever that public asset is. We should always, it should always remain owned by the public. When we did the partnership with the zoo, the zoo is still owned by the people of the city of Pittsburgh. The aviary is still owned by the people of Pittsburgh. The PIPs is still owned by the people of the city of Pittsburgh. I think those are good ideas and good ways of creating a partnership, but not losing the asset. Secondly, it should never be a proposal that is being made simply for somebody to get a better rate of interest off of the deal. If a private entity can do it, so can we. And what will happen often is investors will look at the long-term revenue that can be generated from any type of an asset that's publicly owned, and make the promise of upfront cash, get rich quick-type scenarios, but realizing that the money that they're going to receive is going to pay them a rate much higher than they can get from just having it at a bank or in another investment. That's good for them, but it's not good for the public. So, whenever the analysis is being done, it has to look at what is the best rate for the people that own it, the taxpayers, and not necessarily for the outside interest. And then, third, there needs to be a part of it that is based on just civics, being a good citizen, and wanting to partner with the city in order to provide either a service that can be upgraded, a cost that can be lowered, or an ability to be able to do something that is outside of the ability of the city itself. When we look at PWSA, there is not only zero interest, there's zero chance, while a mayor, that it will ever be sold. It is not for sale, and it will not be for sale. a mayor, that it will ever be sold. Uh, it is not for sale and it will not be for sale. But when we're looking at one point two billion dollars worth of upgrades that are necessary just to get the system operational, it is the possibility that we could partner with a different firm and be able to save money and be able at the same time to get the upgrades that we need, maybe even in a different way than we're looking at it. But all of that has to be very transparent. It has to be open to everybody. Everyone should have the opportunity to put in a proposal. Those proposals need to all be made to the public and we need to be able to say, what is the best system for the dollar? Maybe it's the one that we propose. Maybe it's one that comes in from someone else. Same thing with green infrastructure. We need about seven hundred and fifty million dollars worth of green infrastructure to be able to uh, recognize flooding that's going to be happening in the city, recognizing landslides and just being able to keep the water out of the system. We have a plan that looks at the whole city and we have a price tag of seven hundred and fifty million. Is that the best? I don't know. But we should open that up to a process and see if anyone can propose it to be done better. Maybe they can do it for less. Maybe they can hold more water. But until you ask, you don't really know. That's the way I view public-private.
I think that the women, um, particularly on council would love to talk with you a little bit more about it because I think it's a concern of all of ours. And so I think that we'd love to have a conversation with you about, um, because I, I hear what you're saying and, and I, and I, and I agree, there has to be some help somewhere that's other than the taxpayers, the same taxpayers over and over again. And so I understand what you're saying, but I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, depleting departments and privatizing in, in a long about, you know, roundabout way, some of those departments. And I think that's what we all want to talk with you about. And so we'd love to schedule a meeting um, about that. And also we'd like to talk with you about the two mil, I didn't hear about the early childhood um, funding, if, if there was anything about that, but um, we had talked about maybe um, there's this new state law where you have to have the uh, facilities have to have those pull-down alarms, you know, in the um, in the childcare facilities. And it's because of that fire that happened in um, Erie where five children had passed away. So they came out with a new law that they have to put these new alarms in. Well, a lot of the new facilities, a lot of facilities, one, they're not owned by the people and two, they don't have the money to, to invest. So I would love to see us come up with something collectively. We talked about this a little bit. With some idea of with that, that money that maybe we could incentivize, you know, or help, help offset some of that cost. Other than that, the substations, I do want to tell you, it's a huge concern in our area that they're going to take officers out of our zones. And so we want to make sure that, you know, when those substations open, that it's not taking um, officers out of, you know, zone three and zone, zone six. And, you know, even with zone six, uh, we are plus seven officers, but we lost eleven. So we're still not where we need to be. So I'm, I'm going to tell you, this is the second year. I, I've been patient a little bit, waiting for our numbers to come up a little bit and I've just not seeing it happening in zone six or in zone three, just wants to, you know, to make sure there's more focus in Mount Washington. They're experiencing more crime than they have recently, um, and, and I, I think in violent ways in, in parts of our district. And I think people are concerned with some of that. And Councilwoman Harris is saying zone one, but um, I'm saying, I just think in general, we just have to make sure we're not pulling from those current zones because people are starting to feel a little uncomfortable about some of the things that they're seeing in those neighborhoods. So I just want to make sure that's on your radar. Uh, and then other than that, um, the crossing guards, I just want to say, I think part of it may be the pay and, and the long-term, but I think part of it also is a lot of people stay home and take those positions that are staying home, um, you know, either caregivers or parents or whatever. And when you're sending them across the city, that doesn't really make it easy for them to take a position like that because they take it so they can be close to home, you know, with their family. So I'm just thinking maybe if you look at how you're positioning or stationing or assigning them, appointing them, whatever you do, um, to those jobs, maybe that should, that'd be something you'd have to work on with the union, that and the lifeguard positions. I know we're having a lot of struggle with that as well. Other than that, I really want to thank you for everything that you have done in District Two particularly, but um, we're seeing record investment that we have not seen in decades. So I really want to thank you for that. A lot of it's coming from, you know, Senator Fontana, funding that he's bringing in, but he's bringing it in after having conversations with you and, and Chief of Staff Gilman. And so I really want to thank you for that and um, I want to thank you for the clean sweep program and for the e-recycling programs. Those are programs that are going to benefit the whole city, but we were able to work together on those. I want to thank you for those because I think they're, those are quality of life issues that residents really care about. I mean, I think they, when it gets down to it, that's what they care about, what's outside their door and what they're living with every day. And those things are going to make a big impact, I think, um, into, into all the neighborhoods. So thank you for that. The last thing I'm going to mention is we, a long time ago, started that education committee. And with, I don't want to even, you know, have to say anything about it, but I just want to say with everything that's going on with Pittsburgh Public Schools, I wish we would look at that committee and maybe putting people on that, forming that because I think the only way we're going to make a difference there is us all working together. It's going to take all of us to do what we can do to make our schools the best. And when people say that the mayor, I'm just gonna say this, when they say the mayor shouldn't have a say, I'm gonna say these schools have an effect on our city regardless of whether you agree or disagree with what was said. We've lost over, I think it's now around fifteen thousand families with school-waged children in the city of Pittsburgh. It has an effect on our city. It has an effect on who's paying taxes. It has an effect on what we're doing here and, and what we're able to provide to our residents. So it absolutely is something that the mayor should take an interest in. I just want to make sure we're working together in a way to get the best results for our students, for our, and for our city.
I'll be very brief with it and I've spoken with several school board members in the past week. I think the time is right to be able to bring that together. And I think there are at least three school board members who would be very interested as well. They realize that they can't operate in a silo. That it's not nine people, it's three hundred and ten thousand people and it's about all of our children. I represent those children too. Um, and it doesn't matter if they're in the school or in their home. They are Pittsburghers. And when I see, since the time that I've become mayor, the budget of the school increased one hundred and thirty-seven million dollars, but the number of students decreased ten percent, but the number of employees increased ten percent and the test scores are down in elementary school. Where now fifty percent of the students can't read at a third grade level in third grade. The test scores are down in middle school. The test scores are down in high school where eighty percent of the students are not proficient in math. And the, the budget increased. We went from twenty-one thousand dollars a student in two thousand and fourteen to over twenty-eight thousand dollars a student, a thirty percent increase in what we're spending on students. And there's no accounting for it.
So I want to say that, that I think a lot of this, I mean, I've been around the district for a long time. I worked for the district, my kids attended the schools. But I want to say that I think part of it is that there's a battle between the foundation community and the teachers' union. And I think that that battle is playing out and affecting, you know, our city and our kids. And I think they both have a lot to offer. Let's bring them together and figure this out. I, I really think that, you know,
It's the only way it will work.
I think with your leadership, we can do it. And I, so I just want to say
And that's where my commitment will be. I, I'm not going, you know, I'm not, I just didn't like the process that was being utilized by the school in order to say, we'll take eighteen million dollars out of the operating budget of the city. This goes back to a long history, going all the way back to Mayor Masloff. When Mayor Masloff took that risky stand of lowering the wage tax and she got beat up because she raised the property tax to do it. The school board moved in and raised the wage tax back and took the money. And then during that debate with Act Forty-Seven, we were going back and forth. Jim Furlough was still upset about that. And he made sure that part of the restructuring involved that coming back. And Governor Rendell got involved and gave the schools the money to make up that difference for at least three or four years. And so, and all of that was a part of an entire different restructuring. So when they said, you know, just give us that money and don't have a comment, I had to have a comment.
Yeah, no, I, I think that you should have had a comment and, but I, I just think that um, we have to work together. I just think that that's the only way it's gonna, I mean, I'll be honest with you, a lot of them went out to see my sister because a lot of the new school board members, she's the acting director of the AIU now. But because she started the reading clinics there and some other things, and she does the Latino Center and other stuff. So I think that they went out to get some real answers and real information, how they can be successful and how they can do something. I think that the, the problem is bringing, we need to bring all those people together. It shouldn't be just a few people get to hear those conversations. It should be a lot of us having those conversations and figuring out solutions.
Yeah, I think that there needs
And the parents have to be at the table too, because they're part of the solution.
Yep. It needs to be a structure. It needs to have a lot of voices on it. Just like we did with PWSA when, when it ran into trouble. We brought in others. We listened. We, we put together what the priorities were. We worked together across many different sectors from labor to corporate to environment to community activists. And we didn't shut the door and say, it's just PWSA's problem, that board is the, are the only people that have a voice. We opened it up to every voice. That's the same thing that's needed right now with Pittsburgh Public. There needs to be a as you had said, a collaboration. Uh, and it's far too important because it's our kids.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, everybody cares about, you know, the, seeing the school succeed and, and paying the tax. I mean, we, we can't, our residents can't afford anymore. I mean, they just really are struggling. So I'd really love to, for you to use that opportunity, to use that commission um, to fill those seats and to let's start that conversation.
I look forward to that conversation starting immediately.
Thank you.
And uh, we will have Tiffany reach out from our office to your office tomorrow to begin it.
Oh, good. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for everything you did.
Councilwoman Burgess.
So I'll be very brief. Um, we will continue to work together in the new year and
Don't threaten him.
Now in the next four years, right, to continue these policy conversations. I want to use this public moment. On a private note, I did miss you at the National League of Cities Conference. I did go and went to our, our state dinner and participated and I have, I have come, I'm becoming hooked on going to the conference and seeing and meeting people from around the country. It's remarkable how more similar we are. And our interests are much more similar than, and, and when you first recommended I start going to it, that's what struck, that's, that's what struck me. I, I sat for a while and talked to a a fellow councilman from Philadelphia and the issues they're having in Philadelphia and they're remarkably, remarkably in terms of, you know, what the state gives us, what the federal dollars give us and the shrinking dollars. I mean, our concerns are much more similar than they are different. So that's number one. Um, second of all, I want to thank they're both in the room. I, I just want to tell you how, how helpful both Majestic Lane and Dan Gilman have been and um, how, how they have been just exceedingly professional and um, expert in their given matters and how we have, how, you know, I've just, I've seen uh, issues we've brought to them or things we've worked on happen at light speed, right? And, and it's been remarkable, the difference. So I want to say in your presence that they, both those two people, I think have done a tremendous job um, for our city. Um, the third thing is, I want to make clear, I will be talking about this over the next few weeks. Um, but I want to clear, make clear my perspective in front of you and I see Rich in the back. Councilman Lavelle and I are going to start talking a little bit about racism in our city um, and its impact and it being a public health crisis. But I want at the same time to say that I think you have done more for the cause of African-Americans and to change our city and to make it more equitable and diverse. Our interest and my interest specifically is not to say that city is doing a bad job, but really my interest is to say, come on UPMC, come on University of Pittsburgh, come on Allegheny Conference, follow the city's leadership and commit resources to making this different. And, and to create a space where um, the city can talk about its changes and then challenge, because I think we're leading in this ever, right? I think we're leading in, in, in bringing African-American participation. But I don't think the rest of the city is following as closely. And so from the very beginning, that's my interest. So I, I want to make, make it clear that my, my, my comments are really, really not at all a criticism of the city, but rather a criticism of the region and challenging them to follow the city's commitment. And so I just want to say that very publicly so that you know and, and that the press knows my, my, my stance on this and Bob's here too, and, and in terms of what I'm trying to do. Because my, my issue is, I did not say that, you know, I didn't, I've always known it. I grew up in Pittsburgh, right? So I grew up African-American in Pittsburgh. I don't need one, someone to tell me about the condition of African-Americans in Pittsburgh. But since the report says it in great detail, um, my second question is going to be, okay, well, let's acknowledge it, it is. And then I'm going to challenge those entities to provide me with the resources, right? You know, whether it's one Pittsburgh, whether it's other things, provide us with the resources. We kind of know how to fix this. It's not brain surgery, you know, we've, you know, we've done more in African-American communities. We, you and I both looked at choice and we know this was right. We know how to do this. The question isn't how to do it. The question is the resources, right? And we're at our limit. You put as much money as you can into it. The, the city has, but where's the match from our local partners? And so I've, I've said more about that than I intend to, but that's really my interest. And, and so you can respond to it, but you don't have to. But I just want to be very clear as to, as to why I'm doing this this way.
So since the report came out, the gender equity study, it basically took away any of the argument that races, race does, it, it took away from anyone who would say race does not play a part in Pittsburgh. Uh, it showed clearly through numbers that it absolutely does. And one of the most startling and um, worst examples is the uh, survival rate of, during childbirth. So when you see something as stark as that, you can't deny it. Because if somebody is a certain race, the likelihood that they're going to lose that child in childbirth is much greater than if someone is a different. So I, since that report came out, uh, I was approached by R.K. Mellon Foundation about the work that they're doing in this one particular issue. And they are partnering with McGee Hospital and they are putting the resources in. And they are working and doing not just the data collection in the information in order to be able to recognize what are the core causes, but what resources are needed to change that. And if something good can come out of this report, it could be looked at through the example that they have started. And now we have to take each of it. When we find inequity in housing, why is it? And what are the things, and then what can we do to make, and then we have to measure each year and see that if we're getting better or worse. If we have data that shows the third grade reading levels are completely skewed based on race, we have to ask why and then what is it that can be done in order to improve it? And I look forward to working with the community. We have data, community has ideas and we will put resources beyond the city's budget to make sure that there is a marked difference year by year. Did you want to add anything to the McGee meeting we had? It's just, it was good to see that somebody had already recognized it and was already working on it. And that's the example that everyone that sits in those, top of those skyscrapers, they should be picking one of those issues and saying, this is our issue. We're gonna own it. And uh, we're gonna take on this disparity. You're good?
Good. Welcome.
Thank you.
Always good to have you.
Nice to be here.
I would um, echo
Is it really?
Yeah.
Councilman Burgess's remarks. You have surrounded yourself with people that serve you well. Uh, Dan in particular, Dan has been an amazing chief of staff and I'm sure I'm telling you something you already know. Uh, but approachable and attentive and, and, you know, call him day or night. Anytime Dan's there. Same with Grant. Grant has been an amazing liaison to, to counsel from the mayor's office. He will be surely missed and probably
And James, don't forget James.
Well, James is just James. We could have a whole, we could have a whole meeting on James. But you have, and I think that's a sign of your leadership ability and style in, in the way you have selected the people that you've surrounded yourself with.
I have to go to work every day in that office across the hall. I want to be around people that I like being with. It's a great thing when you can go to work every day and enjoy the people that you're working with.
I agree. Uh, so I don't want to reiterate a lot of what's already gone around the table. Uh, but a lot of it, I believe passionately, I want to be respectful of your time and the fact that we have other budget hearings, but the fact that I don't speak to it, I don't want you to interpret that I am not as invested as other members. Um, I have a couple of other things I'd sort of like to add to the list if I may. Uh, we have five members up for reelection.
up for reelection this year. And so we spent a lot of time out there pounding the pavement. You know how that goes. And talking to constituency. The number one, regardless of where I went, and I've spoken to Dan about this at length, regardless of where I went or who I spoke to, the number one cause of concern for constituency across the board for me was land management. However you might want to define that, whether that was the house that still hasn't come down, or the money that hasn't been allocated to demo, or the vacant lot, or the, you know, the lot that hasn't been cut, the abandoned house that we can't seem to track down because the owner abandoned it, the kids live out of state, nobody wants the house, on and on and on. So I did talk to Dan about wanting to come over and talk with you a little bit further about how the budget reflects our commitment to land management and whatever possible changes we may be able to make or adaptations to the budget to help with that. I knew, I knew it was of great concern. I was, even I was sort of taken aback by how often it came up. Number two, used to be parking. It's rarely do I get calls about parking anymore. We still get them. Number one call that comes into the office today, yesterday, in the last couple of years is waste management. It is, it's all waste management. The idea that somehow, even with the new management rules that we put into place, people don't know how to manage their waste.
So it's not with our operation side, it's
Oh, it is not. And I don't mean to imply that by any means. No, 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 it is not. It is, it is the, it is, well, if we fail anywhere, it could possibly be in our ability to enforce code. But that's a bit of another conversation. Recently, I had Public Works, Mike was wonderful, and so was Dan. We came up to Knoxville. We rode all the different alleyways. We inventoried everything. We talked about where the TVs were, where the tires are, where the trash isn't managed properly, where it's not in containers, where the bags are open. People drive by, they split them, the garbage blows everywhere. I rode them today. That was six months ago, give or take, maybe. It's all back. It's all back. And it's going to continue to come back until or unless we find ways to either enforce code better, educate better, hold landlords accountable, better. It's more than that. It astounds me how ineffective we are, how seasoned we are at creating waste and how ineffective we are at managing waste. So I do believe a lot of the discussion is really around reduction. You know, I get this a lot from different business districts. Give us more garbage cans. I'm happy to help get you more garbage cans, but only if you're willing to participate in a reduction program. Let's talk about how to reduce it, not just continue to create it. Through the parking enhancement district, that we are now in our, I think, our third full year, we have, we're very close, we've exceeded $600,000 collected. Is that amazing? Or what? $600,000 collected to return to Carson Street to manage. But every month when I go to give the report to the planning commission, we're between 16,000 and 18,000 pounds of garbage that we've picked up in one month. That's insane. That's madness. We can't continue that kind of volume. I mean, we have a system in place. We are able, now that we have a contract, thank you, now that we're able to pick it up, but we can't continue to generate it. So the conversation is much bigger than that. But I think it was with you, Dan, I think I shared some pictures. A couple of days I went outdoor knocking in central Oakland and what the trash looked like. And so.
If I can, Council President, you and I have talked extensively and welcomed the conversation. And thanks to you and the councilmen, we do have the clean and lean team in this budget, as well as the new money going to the URA to help, you know, start to address law management. This will not solve the problem. But I just have to get it in. And, you know, Councilman Kell Smith hears me say this all the time. This problem is not one, number one, we're ever going to enforce our way out of, as you're saying. This is not an enforcement issue, though that can be improved. There has to be behavioral changes to it. And it only works with the partnership from our judges and our state legislators. Our, I mean, we can sit down and have meetings with our enforcement officers and you'll hear story after story after story where, because usually state law, it's not, it's not our judges not wanting to be helpful. You can't serve people. It's behind a corporation. The police officer didn't witness it themselves. An eyewitness testimony is not acceptable. There are 15, 30, 100 different reasons. We do not win these cases. And companies know they can come in and dump in Belssoover and then low bid the contract because they're not paying dumping fees. And absentee landlords know they cannot pay to have someone and cut their weeds for nine months a year. And they'll cut it the night before, they go before the judge and the judge will say, it's been abated. And they get away with cutting the grass one time a year. The city cannot solve these problems without our partners. And we need your help with those partnerships.
Yeah. So you and I are 101% on exactly the same page. And we share some frustration. How is it that we bring state elects then to the table to understand how this is having the negative impact on us and that we need state legislators to change
Look outside the door.
To untie our hands to help us to solve these, to help us to solve these problems. I think one way that we could possibly help bring that to be is to have people, and I know law is taxed already, but having someone from law or an equal representative to be at these hearings before Judge Ricardi to argue the case for the city. I go to them. We see them time and again, go through the process. You know, you're nine months into it. You go before the judge. There wasn't proper serving or there wasn't what other abnormality that took place. The cases continued again for another six months. And then it goes on and on and on.
The challenge we have to start on that and not to, again, go back, what, almost 13 years in the debate at this very table when the mayor was the councilman and I was working for him. The challenge we have there, too, is not having centralized housing court. Pluses and negatives, I'm not even looking to rehash it. But we have judges with hearings at the exact same time. We do have a solicitor assigned just to housing court, but they obviously cannot be in two places at once. And Domi is issuing citations that we care deeply about. And Public Works is the one issuing the garbage citation. So you have multiple housing courts at once and Domi Court at the same time. And then Public Works citations aren't heard by magistrate. They're heard by common police judges. So you can't be in four places at once. So it again goes to the partnership with the judicial branch of, we'll assign the attorneys to be there, but they can only obviously be human.
So then what's the secret between building this better relation with the judicial branch? Because that, that really is the breakdown. And that's really where the frustration comes from that I hear about.
A lot of it is the rules of criminal procedure in Harrisburg. It's not our local judges. And, you know, Reverend Burgess talked about how you go to NLC and here, city after city with the same problems. The mayor will tell you the same thing from his mayor things. I'll say the same thing from chief of staff. And you can go to Pennsylvania Municipal League or ALUM for Allegheny County. It's not like Springdale doesn't have a problem with absentee landlords, or the Torrentum doesn't have a problem with illegal, we all have the same problems. And thankfully, when you go to the, work through those groups, it is bipartisan and it's east, west and north, south. It's bringing those partnerships and prioritizing it is really important because we need the help. And we also need the community's help. I mean, illegal dumping in particular, somebody's got to see them doing it. Trucks don't show up and dump truckloads over a hillside without somebody seeing them going down that path. Someone's got to call 911.
We do. We do. And I don't want to minimize the impact that dumping has, but I'll even break it down to be even more simple to the Pepsi container that so and so picked up that threw by the wayside that after six months, there's 100 of them out there. I mean, it is, it's an astronomical problem of this sort of single-use container world that we live in and where everything lands up and how difficult it is to ensure that people manage their waste appropriately. I go to South Watch meetings or Bob will go to South Watch meetings every month. I guarantee you, top of the list, top priority is waste management. Which brings us into rental registry. And I know that is, can be a difficult subject. But can you please, just for my own edification, I understand that it is still stayed by the judge. Is that correct?
That is correct. Depositions were done two weeks ago.
And do we have any sense at all about where, because every community meeting I go to, no matter what, I get the, I get the question about where we are with the rental registry.
I mean, having depositions is a big step forward from where we have been under, I can't even think of the name of the last step. I apologize, the right legal term. But it is a step forward. But, you know, Larry Baumiller, who's the assistant city solicitor working on it, has stressed to the judge our very strong desire for quick action. But you have to assume there's going to be appeals potentially as well. So it's a critical tool. It would be life-changing for us, but it's not something we see as an imminent tool in our toolbox.
You have a couple more minutes? I just have a few more. RCOs and registered community organizations, and Dan and I have talked at length about this. I think we started with the very best of intentions. We've had a hiccup or two in the RCO legislation. Maybe it has created some bad relationship where it didn't exist before. In the new year, I'd really like to work on and possibly some tweaks that might need to take place in the RCO legislation to help calm some of that down. And I'd like your help with that, please. The, oh, and talking about the substations and the Zone 7, that, we've had that conversation for a very, very long time. What I want to thank you for is, is the, the understanding that we are a sociable city and that the North Shore and downtown and the Strip District and Oakland and South Side and the Cultural District exists for a reason. And that is the fact that we need to socialize. And the fact that we socialize on 24/7/365 time spans now requires different policing styles and different provision for public services that are due to handle this 24/7/365 economy. The world's changing. And we, if we want to continue to reap the benefit of being a sociable city and all of the revenue and the desire for people to live in sociable cities continues, then we have to make certain that we put the resources to that. So I want to thank you for your desire to see the substations come in and the different policing style. I would only ask that we add a, since we're talking a lot about economic development, that we counterbalance that with the economic development argument of what it means to be a sociable city and understand that it's not just policing that brings about that, but rather a focus on the economic development portion of it. We are in a, what's the word I'm looking for, experiential economy that more and more people are interested in not purchasing goods, per se, but rather purchasing experience. And what does that mean? And how do we adapt city services to, to help assist people that want to come out and participate in an experiential economy and drive revenue, but stay safe and, you know, and create a city that people genuinely want to come and live in because we have this wonderful experiential economy. So I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. My pleasure. Appreciate you being here. This is your sixth, right? I believe, sixth budget hearing. Do other members have anything else they might wish to offer up before I turn the table over to Councilman Burgess? I know we have a number of other budget hearings. You've spent 90 minutes, so I really do appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much for being here.
So I look forward to this process and working with you on amendments.
Worked really well last year.
Yeah. I think having finance chair, being able to work together with the members and then working in collaboration comes out with a pretty good product.
I did want to bring up one other thing. Every year, we have made provisions to provide for the hunger organizations. I know there's nothing set yet, per se. I know we'll be having our tax participation hearing on Monday morning at 10:00, I believe. I just want to make certain that, that you and of course, members are aware of the importance of it and our desire to ensure that we allocate.
Sorry, just one note, and I know budgets, talking to your budget director, but I'll just say it here, too. I think our amendments are due Thursday, I believe is the day.
Yes.
Been talking to Kevin.
Yeah. We'll ask for a little leniency. We'll try to have most there, but given the comment from Councilwoman Harris, which we agree with, based off potential some union agreements coming in, things will have to be adjusted after that. So I just wanted to state for the record, it's not us ignoring council's deadline. There may be some dominoes that fall after that date due to, to union contracts.
Well, I like that we're much earlier this year than we have been in years past. Thank you, Bill. It does give us some time there for, for anything that might come up. But we take our first line item vote on the ninth. And we don't take a final vote. Forgive me, Bill.
I believe it would be the following Monday.
It should be. I thought it was on here.
Yeah, it should be.
I don't know why I don't see it now.
Bottom vote is on the ninth. So your final vote, preliminary vote would be on December 11th with the final vote
There it is.
Tuesday, December 17.
So there is It gives us flexibility.
Between now and the end.
And I appreciate you doing that.
We'll obviously keep you posted on the process.
I would think that council will take care of all its concerns before we would typically have the final vote. So if we need to extend for any reason, because we're waiting for those numbers coming back on arbitration, we can deal with that and maybe do it at a later meeting.
So however you'd like to get members together to come over, we'll work through you to do that.
I have done what I did last year. Wasn't going to say anything publicly, but the budget director has already sent, I believe
Yes.
An email to our members asking for their budget amendments so that we can come as one package. The president and I can come over and we can negotiate that out. I'm working, I am, I am, we've already, we're already in the queue to do that process. And so.
I just want to publicly state, though, that if other members wish to join in
Sure.
On coming over, I want to make certain that they, that they do.
They can't come more than, more than four can't come over. So they can come over, but the only two of them can join us in this process. So they'd have to kind of tell us upfront. And that does not, it does not limit any council person from not participating in this process if they so choose to. But I just find that we are one city. We are not nine individual districts. We are one city with one controller and one mayor. And so we have to look at this as
Maybe we only need one council person. Just saying.
No, I didn't want it to be that, Teresa. If you want to make me that, that's different.
I want to make you a lot of things. That's not it.
We were a little different, right?
I just want, I just want to respect the members' desire that if they wish to participate
Our process has been transparent.
In further conversation, they're welcome. But it was a good process. It worked really well. And I'm looking forward to doing it again this year. Always a pleasure having you here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan, very much.
I'll see you. Very Merry Christmas and happy holidays as well.
Hey, and good luck on the dog.
Yeah.
Okay. You never know. You never know.
Thank you, man.
All right. Thank you. So I'm going to turn the chair over to Councilman Burgess. We are going to go into our Office of Equity. No, 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 please do. No.
I'm going to go make a quick phone call.
Okay.
Majestic. No.
Councilwoman here.
I'm going to make a quick phone call. I'll be back.
Yes, you can please start.
Yes. Thank you, sir. The Office of Equity, the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment has been rebranded for 2020 as the Office of Equity. The mission of the new Office of Equity is create policies, procedures and programs that aim to make the city more accessible and equitable for all. The former Equal Opportunity Review Commission is also housed within the Office of Equity. Budgetary highlights for 2020. Total budget, $1,728,000. That's an increase of approximately $2,800, $200,800 from the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment's 2019 budget. Total full-time positions are 14, plus a part-time position and funding for an intern, intern, the same as last year's budget. Of the 14 positions in 2019, 10 have been retitled. There are no new positions. There is one change of note in the non-salary subclasses, an increase of $158,000 professional service. This is driven in part by funding for the LGBTQIA+ and the Gender Equity Commissions at $55,000 each. Clean Pittsburgh Commission also receives $55,000, another commission, but that comes out of the Department of Public Works budget. And with that?
So I want to say thank you, just to, I guess, talk a little bit about the transition.
You chose to suffer the public.
Oh, I didn't choose, oh, pardon me, for the record.
Did he?
No, I didn't. So, pardon me. Majestic Lane, Deputy Chief of Staff and Chief Equity Officer for the City of Pittsburgh. Pardon me. So, yeah, so just wanted to say thank you for the support of council, obviously for the support of the Mayor, in making this kind of transition from the Bureau of Neighborhood Empowerment, which we traditionally looked at as a lot more neighborhood-based, to the Office of Equity that we look at and look in the future to be a lot more people-based and working to transition to make sure that we're breaking down silos within the work that we do. Pittsburgh is famously siloed, and people tend to operate in those, whether the city government, corporations, and otherwise. So we're really trying to break that down and facilitate what does equity look like internally, and then also how can we model that behavior for externally. So, thank you.
Again, I am grateful for your work and for the work that you have, that you've done. I hope to work with you even closer together in the upcoming year to figure out a forum. I think we may have wanted to talk about all the things that we have done, the city has done, that we have not as much advertised in order to make the workforce more diverse. And so we'll chat more about that, and so that's it. Any questions for Mr. Lane? Erica?
Thank you. I'm really glad that you're in the position that you are. And I would say that the only thing, the only request that I have that I, sounds small, but actually would be, I think of great utility to council members and probably to the general public as well, is an org chart to understand how, who works where and who works within the Office of Equity, if you don't already have that, because...
We do, but I will share.
You do, okay. If you have that already, that's great, and you can just share that with us. You do so much, and it's, I just want the constituents that we serve, the constituents that you serve, to understand all the different tenants of the Office of Equity. So that's really the only, the only request I have at this moment. Thanks for all that you do.
No problem, I will give that to you. And also, I just want to quickly talk about the kind of citizen participation, broad participatory budgeting process.
Yes, thank you.
One of the things that we have recognized is that, again, owing to many of these silos, we've recognized that this year, some of the engagement, community engagement work was being done in a totally siloed way, which was disconnected from everyone else's activity, right? And it was coming out of departments and people weren't talking. So we are sitting down with OMB to actually look at a community engagement process for really talking about how are we talking about budgets from the beginning of the year? We're not just, not going to do two events, or if we're going to do fair housing implementation, we're going to have this be a broader conversation. And that's one of the focuses for this year. So broader citizen engagement around those kind of things, being able to pull in information, but also do it different ways, because everyone can't come to meetings, and we acknowledge that, and everyone can't come to a meeting at 7:00 because they work second shift. So I don't want to be presumptuous that any particular mode serves everyone's interests. So we're just going to look at how we can continue to partner, given the resources that we have, and partner with you and partner with others, because also you do a lot of meetings in communities. So how can we make sure we're partnering more with the Office of Community Affairs also with the Office of Equity? And they're talking about the budget and talking about what's important to people.
Thank you. I'm glad you brought that up, and I wondered if there was a report that's already been published or released that I've missed, if I think that the Mayor brought up or a Chief of Staff brought up.
Yeah, so what, I think he talked about the conversation we've had with some activists and advocates on some best practices, and, you know, we look to be in conversation with them around what have been best practices of other cities and seeing how we can make it relevant to Pittsburgh. I think also what the Mayor was talking about was the online tool that we have that you can put your data in and where you live and things like that, and that can kind of give you a general idea of where your money goes. But then we also want to do a better job of explaining to people what money goes where, because when they look inside of the budgets, they don't often understand some money may come from our caps, for example, to Councilwoman Kell Smith's example, that this, you know, this might be money that we are supporting and working with other folks to bring money to neighborhoods, so people can get a better idea of what our neighborhoods are receiving. Because I think often there's a confusion of what investments neighborhoods are really getting, and that's because we don't often do the best job of saying, this is what the neighborhoods are getting through a budget engagement and then through a broader community engagement, so people understand. We may be doing PWSA work that may be equitable. We may be redoing bus stations, there may, you know, all those things that point towards equity, but those are not things that people look at when they're thinking about it. So we just have to do a better job of that.
I'm familiar with both of those. I'm glad I didn't miss anything. Good, good, good. And, you know, I'll just say again what I said to the Mayor and Chief of Staff, that there are a lot of different ways you could go about it and communicate with the public, and sometimes it's messy, but, you know, sometimes having citizen representatives who are engaged and are, you know, to the Mayor's point, are delving into the realities of what a capital and operational budget looks like, are looking at the budgets of finance and OMB, and, you know, not just the things that touch their lives immediately. I mean, that's, it can be so powerful for a citizen to talk to another, a resident to talk to another resident and say, look, no, I understand that this is what you see, but I've been delving into this for 12 months, and as another resident of the city who's not an expert at this, I can see the drawback, I can see the levers. You pull one lever down, another one goes up, and so I, you know, I'm really interested to see what the possibilities are in terms of that kind of citizen, kind of a citizen congress almost.
Look forward to it.
And participatory budgeting. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Otso Lumen Smith.
Thank you. I just wanted to say first, I'm really looking forward to working with you. I've known you for so many years, I can't even remember now, but I've, Majestic and Knowledge came together with Mr. Zaire, and I just want to say, Mr. Zaire's done a great job in mentoring two really amazing young men.
Thank you.
And so I'm sure he's very proud. But when we're talking about the engagement, I just want to make sure that we're explaining to people, I heard you say it a little bit, though, about what the differences are between, because there's so many opportunities for engagement. People are actually getting overwhelmed, because it's just too much. And I think that there's going to be some more of a narrow, like more of a concentrated effort to get people engaged in different ways, but make sure that they understand what they're getting engaged with, because a lot of times, people just don't understand. Because if you're not in this world, you don't understand.
Right.
And I think that a lot of times, people say that they haven't had the opportunity or whatever, and sometimes that's not actually accurate either. So I think that it's trying to, you know, find your way through to what's a true concern and what's somebody's, you know, just saying that they can't do. So I think you have to weigh through on that.
And parsing through it and then allowing, you know, like you said, a lot of different ways, and also when people, some people are coming out because they really care about development, some people are coming out because they care about roads, and trying to figure out just broadly what kind of information are we giving to people and allowing them to check in, and as long as also partnering with you, because that, you know, you often have a closer view to what's happening in the community. So we just want to be able to have that information and then be able to tell the story of what we're investing in and why, and what does it mean, and how if you say your complaint is this, how we understand in the city, we mean it to handle, to do this, to solve it, right? So we want to be able to tell our story better. So that's something for this year that we look to do better.
I think it's really hard, because if you don't tell the story, then people don't know. If you do tell the story, people think you're just, you know, just talking. It's a difficult, it's a difficult task, a balancing act, but I think you're going to do an amazing job, and looking forward to working with you and your whole team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, man.
Thank you very much. We're joined by Councilwoman Gross. Do you have anything to say?
Yes, I do. Thank you for asking. So I apologize for having to step out. It's been a long, it's a long afternoon, and I'm chairing in a little while, so I needed to step out of the room for a little bit. We've chatted just briefly. I wanted to make sure that we mention that we have both the kind of, the Equity Commissions and Equity work happening at the URA and your office now. I kind of see you at the middle of those efforts, but I wanted to make sure that I put in a plug for looking at gender equity in all of the things that we do, even if it's intersectionally, right? So we have a lot of talk, we have a post-agenda coming up this week on racial equity, and we want to make sure that we're looking at those things together. When the Mayor was here just a few minutes ago, I mentioned that one of the things we heard from the Urban Redevelopment Authority a few hours ago now is that they have a micro loan program that is almost entirely being used, over 30 projects, it sounded like to me, by African-American women who are residents of the City of Pittsburgh, who are trained and financed for new businesses. And I just find that incredibly encouraging, and I really want us to look at how our expenditures are equitable or not equitable in all of the things that we do in the city budget. So if you wanted to spend a minute...
Yeah, I think one of the things that we learned from the training from the Government Alliance for Racial Equity is to be able to really see the impacts and see where certain impacts have outsized results on particular genders, because there are investments that you make that have an outsized impact on particular genders. And again, kind of owing to storytelling, we've been involved in that, the Catapult Program from the very beginning, but we don't often, that's presented often as a neighborhood strategy versus a equity strategy, right? And I think kind of parsing out some of that work sometime that we...
It can be both.
It can be both, and so really trying to tell that, tell that story better is a big part of what we'll be doing going forward, but also being explicit about those things and being explicit about if we're making investments in roads or if we're making investments in things, you know, partnering with the Gender Equity Commission to really talk about that level of conversation, as well as things that we're doing internally in HRCS, which I don't think we talk about enough, to really be inclusive of different groups that we're trying to do for hiring internally in the city.
There's an article, a scholarly article that I have somewhere, and I'm probably going to get the title wrong, but it's something to the effect of, are snowplows sexist? And I think you could ask the same question, and we should be asking the same questions, are snowplows racist, are snowplows ageist or classist? And so how we do even funding operations around plowing streets or paving, right, can have a differential impact. And certainly, I think paving's one where we've had many years of being able to look at council district by council district. We're a lot better now than we used to be. I think Councilman Burgess and I are still at the bottom of miles invested in last year's budget, which is okay, actually, because I always say my constituents kind of have, are of two minds about how their quality of roads are. As soon as they get paved, then they have people going 65 miles an hour down them, and they're dangerous. So there's a very divided, there's not a consensus around paving. But how we are doing even our operating expenses as well as our capital expenditures have a real impact on people's lives. Councilman Burgess is often quick to say that our budgets are moral documents, right? But we don't have the analysis and the numbers in front of us to make more informed choices. And so I would hope, and I've been pushing as a Commissioner on the Gender Equity Commission, that that, any further research dollars should be inwardly focused on how we spend dollars, but not just on pay gap among city employees, and not just on MBEW, which we can do a better job, because we do, we spend millions on subcontracting, there's no doubt about it, and we can be better there. But then also, the rest of the five or six hundred million dollars, which is the bulk of the spending, can still be analyzed by its differential impact upon the people of the City of Pittsburgh. So that's just a plug for what work I would like to see coordinated, not that your office certainly doesn't have the capacity with four employees to do everything, full-time, 14 people, but the URA is going down in that direction as well. The Gender Equity Commission is doing its little bit to bring us policies and awareness back to council, and we can continue to ask even our authorities these questions. I like to point out that at the lead service line replacements at PWSA, it was a very intentional policy that I was vocal about, that we started with our lowest-income neighborhoods, and we prioritized where there were children and low-income households. And there, I think we're up to 8,000 or so now. So those, that was an infrastructure investment in our disadvantaged neighborhoods that we should continue. And we can ask, we can ask those hard questions every time we're making these major expenditures. If you'd like to respond, that's fine. I didn't ask you a question, I don't think so.
No, I think it's part of our deepening work around this. I mean, I think there's the systemic work, there's the, what I would call transactional work, and there's the systemic work, right? There's the kind of, how are we engaging, what are we doing? And then there's like the deeper systemic work, and what do those things mean? And so those are things that you'll continue to see going into this year as we continue to kind of deepen our practice with GARE and other partners, especially around what policy link calls results-based accountability through a race and gender lens, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lane. Again, we look forward to working with you and looking forward to what we're going to do together next year.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for this moment.
Thank you, Councilman.
God bless you. That will take us to the next office, which is the Office of City Controller. So we asked our Controller and his deputy to come forward, and Bill can start even while they're coming forward.
There we go. The City Controller is a fiscal watchdog for the citizens of the City of Pittsburgh. His job as the Controller is to protect city tax dollars from waste, fraud, and abuse. The Controller does this by auditing all city government-related expenditures. The Controller also conducts audits for all the city departments and city authorities. The 2020 highlights for the Controller's budget this year, total budget, $4,938,000. It's an increase of $207,000, or 4.4%. Total full-time positions are 57, the same as in 2019. There are no salary or position changes. There is only one very minor change to non-salaries, and that's the transfer of $750 from maintenance to cleaning. The Controller has a few trust funds under it, Employee Travel Expense Advanced Fund, which is a revolving fund of $30,000. They're currently, all but $100 is advanced to employees and departments. There are two trust funds that keep reemerging in the system, and I think this is just a matter of cleanup, the Vending Trust Fund under the Controller, which was closed in 17, still has a balance of $1,700. Also, the Controller's Financial Management Information System Trust Fund still has a balance of $20, and we need to do a little cleanup on this. I've also included on the back, the Controller is responsible for verifying the revenue and for the city's 2020 budget as well as the five-year plan. So I have the five-year plan on the back of the Controller's sheet with those revenues on there, if anyone needs to reference. Thank you.
Mr. Controller. Good morning, good afternoon. Thank you very much. I am City Controller Michael Lamb. I'm joined today by our Deputy Controller Doug Anderson. And just briefly, I would just, just for a couple corrections there. I think we did make a request for additional $2,780 in funding for tuition reimbursement this year, or for next year. We do have a lot of employees who are taking advantage of that, which is great, and because it helps us to grow and to better train and have a higher skilled workforce, so we certainly encourage that change. And I do believe that the two trust funds you referenced have been cleaned up, but we'll check on that, too. Yeah, I believe that's already been done. So this year was, 2019 was a busy year in our office. We've, I think last year, we talked about the relaunch of Fiscal Focus and the ability now to basically track city spending in real time on our site. People have reacted well to that and are using it and taking a look at it and diving down deep into city finance in ways that we really haven't been able to do before. So we're engaging the citizens in new ways in the issues of city finance. We did a number of audits this year. We were, we did a big audit on procurement and contracting earlier in the year. We, of course, did the property sales audit that received a lot of attention, but maybe not as much attention to the work that we're doing in the Law Department, in Innovation and Performance, and Police Secondary Employment, and in the Department of Public Works, we're actually looking at snow removal. So we are, and that will be released early next year. We also were in the parks, looking at the RAD Trust Fund. We looked at the, of course, we do the annual audit for LARDA, which we'll do again this year, and we did the, this year, we took a look at the two franchise trust funds, the Verizon and the Comcast agreements, and did reports on those, as well as a, well, audit we did, it was troublesome, actually, in parks with respect to the Impress Fund for for paying for umpires and little leagues, and just the lack of control on, on that kind of, and made some good recommendations there, as well as a number of other smaller fiscal audits. So, you know, we've, we had a busy year. We've worked with council on a number of things. Obviously, our probably question now, over the next couple of weeks, is what council will direct with respect to the Parks Trust Fund? We're waiting, obviously, for council to make its kind of determination on, on, on the dispersment and the approval of that dispersment of those funds, and, and really just how the process and procedure around the trust fund that will be, that we will create in our system. But we're looking, you know, we'll always, obviously need some guidance from council on that. And, and I would just tell you that we are, you know, I, I think when you look at those funds, the main thing we want to ensure is that we, we understand that it's, it's, it's added value, right? It's, we have a base level of support that we're giving the parks today, and anything that comes in new will be new. It's gonna be a new, it's new money. It's not replacing any old money. We're not moving money around with the budget. I think if anything, what the voter said was that they want to see this new money go into new projects, new maintenance arrangements in the parks, more attention to the smaller parks and those kind of things. So, I think we have a responsibility to live up to the rhetoric that we heard during that campaign, and, and, and that goes to the issue of matching dollars, goes to the issue of equity, whether it's geographic equity, or, or making sure underserved communities are, are better served. And all that really has to come up from council. So, I'm, I'm certainly willing to participate in those discussions as you proceed with that, but we're really gonna need council's, council's recommendation on that as we move forward. Twenty nineteen, or twenty twenty, we will continue to advance the technology that we've done in the office. We will, of course, again, produce the normal reports that we do. We are interested in the conversation you've had recently with respect to cooperative agreements with the Conservancy, and I guess that'll be up for discussion tomorrow, or final vote tomorrow. So we'll, we'll, we'll take a look at that and, and, and work on getting to something as soon as possible on that. But other than that, it was a good year. I, I have to tell you that Bill mentioned it. This was really the first year that we went through a budget process where we weren't in the old Act forty-seven model, and I thought it went well, at least from our perspective, to be able to sit with the administration and council's representative to really hash out and have a very deep discussion about the various revenue sources. You know, my job doesn't typically put me on the revenue side of the equation, I'm always more on the spending side of the equation, but to have a good discussion about the assumptions that get made, and how we come up with these revenues over the next five years, I, I would commend the Finance Department and the Office of Management and Budget, and, and council's Budget Office for that open discussion, and I'm glad to see that it's something that you codified in the city code after Act forty-seven disappeared. So it's been a good, a really good, open discussion, and I certainly would appreciate the fact that everyone is, is agreeable, and, and maybe not even agreeable is not the right word, at least as positive, and, and professional in those, in those discussions as they've been. So, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Your deputy have any?
No.
Oh, thank you very much. We'll start with Councilwoman Gross.
Welcome, both of you. I appreciate your being here. Mr. Controller, you went over a few things that I wanted to acknowledge. First of all, that you've continued with the annual LERTA audits. It was Councilman O'Connor and I that first passed the resolution to request that audit, when we realized that there wasn't a good system of tracking where, and being able, again, to come back and report to council, to track, to analyze, report, so that we can make decisions about who was getting their taxes abated, and where. I feel like you have a kind of performance audit there, and we're still looking for some improvements around how those LERTAs are tracked, and starting January first, we'll, we'll take into effect the new LERTA requirements, which require, for example, affordable housing in exchange for the residential abatement. And so, it's going to be interesting, I think, as we continue to see, we'll have the opportunity to do a more social analysis, and that, we, I feel we still don't have, we don't have the capacity on the council side, really, to do that, to look back and say like, okay, you know, given the last ten years of who got, what kinds of handouts were, what was the impact on the city? Not just on tax revenue, but what did we do to the neighborhoods? And which neighborhoods saw those developments, and which neighborhoods really didn't benefit from them?
Yeah, I would, I would say that, you know, this is, this, we've done that now two years, and I think last year's was more comprehensive than the prior year. I think this year will be more so. And as we go on, I think we'll be, we'll be, be able to ask more and, and get better data. Part of the problem is that a lot of this data is housed down in the URA, and get sometimes...
For what reason, I don't know.
Right. So sometimes getting that data is not the easiest, but, you know, I think that we've, we've developed, we've, we've given them notice now of, okay, the things that we expect to be able to see as we move forward. And there's also, there are also new requirements under GASB that require us to start reporting some of this in the city's financial documents as well. So it puts an added kind of weight on them getting this stuff done, so.
Wonderful, thank you so much. The second one, it wasn't that long ago that Councilwoman Smith motioned, or held the post-agenda on vacant properties that she wasn't able to attend, and that I chaired for, so we were just at this table just a few weeks ago. And we still have a lot of unanswered questions about what to do next around the vacant properties. The mayor has made some broad statements about how we're going to do things differently, and we really need to see how, one of the things that we spent a good bit of time on in that conversation, that I still have questions about, is how and why the URA have seven thousand of the fourteen thousand properties that the city has in its own inventory kind of just flagged, is the only word anyone ever uses for it. That's not a legislative term. There's no legislative authority for any, any one of the, you know, government subsidiaries, authorities to just flag a property. And I will assert for council members once again, that only council, in my understanding of land use, and anything about disposing or not disposing of any city asset, would be a vote at this table. So, I, I question this kind of properties having been flagged.
I agree. I mean, there are certain, certainly, the Commonwealth has granted redevelopment authorities certain powers, but...
That don't include that.
Yeah, well, they certainly don't include not being able to explain to the public why properties are being held, or flagged, or whatever you want to call it. And, and that's the problem, you know, when you have these properties, and they just refuse to tell us why they're even holding them, or, or putting...
I don't think they have any authority to hold them, honestly. I'm gonna continue to assert that, so someone's gonna really have to expel that out a lot more plainly to me, or I think they are not, not held de facto. They might think they're held, but they're not held, according to this table. So...
I, I, I'll continue what I've said in what's in the audit, and what I've said prior. If we had an entity, or system, that was open and transparent, and that, and whose mission it was to get these properties back on the tax rolls, that would be great.
I think that's the administration.
The land bank is supposed to be that entity. It's not yet.
Nope.
And it's been a long time that we've been talking about the land bank, and someday, ideally, the land bank will be that entity that deals with a lot of these questions.
It does have the authority.
And whether it's, whether, yeah, it, it probably would be its own entity. It would not be within the, another component unit, but its own entity. I would tell you, though, that when they do that, the, the other thing that really matters, when you look around the city at vacant property, are all the properties that are not owned by the city, not owned by the URA, but that are delinquent and have long been abandoned. And those properties are properties that the land bank should be taking.
That's an additional thirteen thousand on top of the fourteen thousand that's in the inventory.
Exactly, right, right.
So it's twenty-seven thousand properties total.
Probably close to that.
And there's about a hundred and forty thousand parcels.
That number fluctuates, because some people do come in and, and satisfy some of the liens on some of those properties. But yeah, it's, it's, it's a, it's a twenty thousand number.
That's a very big number. I'm curious that you're doing an audit of snow removal, having just given the example of some policy article that is not in front of me right now, that's called something like, are snowplows sexist? Because we are just looking to start questioning how expenditures are either, are they equitable by race, gender, class even? And, and we are looking for the mechanisms to, to answer those questions. We really can't answer them right now.
I hadn't really thought of a snowplow in terms of it being sexist before, I have to admit.
Exactly, it sounds like a catchy title.
So, yeah, I mean, clearly, I will tell you that when we do audits, particularly when we do audits in Public Works, we really do try to think about it in terms of equity, and not just neighborhood equity, but equity. You know, are, are we really, are, are, is this, is this function serving the citizenry in the fairest way? And so, we do think about that. I don't know that we've actually, actually thought about it specifically in, in the terms of sexism. I know we haven't, actually, in most cases, but I'm, I'm, I'd be interested to hear what you're talking about there.
Exactly. So, you know, the, the argument goes generally in other places that we haven't, we haven't done this analysis for Pittsburgh, but, you know, for example, let's say you have a city where you know most of the people who don't own cars are, you know, poor female-headed households, right? And we certainly, we have something like that in Pittsburgh, right, where we have a significant level of people within two hundred percent of the poverty line, right, something like forty percent of our population. It's very big. And then we know sixty to seventy percent of that population are female-headed households, and that a lot of those don't own cars, right? And so, if you're spending a relative amount of your budget, this might be a lot easier to analyze in a small municipality that doesn't have as diverse and complicated a budget, but if you see an outsized expenditure relative to other things that serve forty percent of your population, you're serving, you know, you're spending an outsized amount of your budget on, you know, things that are serving the people who own cars. And it's just, it's an opportunity to say like, hey, is this really our choice? So we make different choices, how best to serve our, our citizens.
Yeah, I mean, I just, the only thing I would say is, is don't get lost on the, on, on the one issue, which is that, you know, our, our primary responsibility is to keep people safe, and so, you know, snow, snow removal is, is a lot about keeping people safe.
Right, the buses need the streets, too.
Whether those people are, own cars or not, there's still a, a need to keep vehicles from sliding off roads into properties and into people.
Yeah, it's not a, it's not a one, it's, there's not a unilateral discussion. This is just a general...
Yep.
Thought-provoking way to frame an important issue, which is that we should be looking and to see how our choices impact our residents. And so, you mentioned, lastly, that you are standing ready and have the capacity to do the audit of the, all of the agreements that we have with the Parks Conservancy...
Yeah, I mean...
Once the administration gets them.
I came out specifically for that.
I believe what we do. I mean, we're, we'll take a look, I, I, you know, it's gonna be interesting to see, first off, if we have all the agreements, right? I mean, if all the agreements are within our system.
I think you would only have contracts, right?
I suspect that there may be some that aren't, right? Because, but, even cooperative agreements should still be, by the charter, should be countersigned by the Controller's Office, and, and logged with a number that would be in the Controller's database. I suspect that there's one or two that aren't in that situation. I don't know that for sure, but I suspect that's the case, because I don't know why you do find something out that you didn't know before. And so, so we'll take a deep dive at that and look at that, and then, and then once we have, once we're satisfied that we have everything, you know, we'll, we'll go through those and look at terms, and, and, you know, we, to me, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I didn't follow the, I wasn't, I didn't see the discussion that was here last week on this bill. To me, it goes back to what I said previously, which is, the, the money that is being raised through this new tax is to go to new projects, and we want to make sure that, that it's not being used to fund some of these existing agreements.
I think one of the things that I'm interested in, in finding out, and again, thank you for being willing to do the audit, because it's just, I think, important for all of us to have this degree on the same information, and not have different examples, but that it should be made public, and we should all have a, the same understanding of any place where revenue is diverted, and has been already diverted. So, again, in the, in the unofficial draft agreement for Shenley Plaza, that is the only one I've been able to get, is that all of the rental income from any of the vendors, including the big fancy restaurant porch, goes di, in my understanding, from the reading of the draft that I have, goes directly to the Parks Conservancy. And that we accommodated that in the agreements that we, that the city council at the time, or the mayor's office at the time in the nineteen nineties, made with the Parks Conservancy. And so even the little kiosks, like all of the, they are the master, they have a master lease, so that they, all of those vendors and restaurants are basically like tenants of the Parks Conservancy, is the way I understand, but this is why I want a kind of like common understanding and reading of it, not my reading, of a document that's not even the official document.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think it's rare, it's rare for public areas, parks, spaces, to be funded by something supporting that, that open space. But, you know, it's, it's typically that money comes through the city, not through another organization.
So it has not, if, if that, if I understood it correctly, that revenue has not been accounted for in any of our audits?
Right. The original agreement of the, I think we talked about this, the original agreement of the Mellon Garage required that fund, you know, that funds from the Mellon Garage be set aside to maintain Mellon Park. That kind of went by the wayside over the years, and so there's, there clearly are some of those kind of agreements that are out there that we need to take a look at and see where do they go for.
So where, just briefly, where do, where does the revenue from the Mellon Garage go to?
Well, it goes, in, in that case, it's split between the parks, between the Parking Authority and the city.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Cheers.
And is the Parking Authority sharing the cost of maintaining the park?
Well, you know, they did a big project there just a couple of years ago to renew the park, and that was done through a coordination of a lot of different funds. There were, there were state funds involved in that, there were private funds that the Parks Conservancy brought to bear there. There were city and parking funds involved in that as well. But I remember in, in discussing that early on with some, with some people from the Parks Conservancy about the original agreement, and I think because the original agreement, everyone seemed to agree that the original agreement called for the, the parking revenues to be, you know, diverted to maintain the park, but no one seemed to be able to produce the agreement.
And I really didn't know about the Parks Conservancy with, can't think of the name of the park now, Shenley Park.
I didn't either. That's the first I, just didn't, just lately, that's the first I've heard of it as well.
Wow. And that was actually put in the agreement?
The draft I've been able to get my hands on, that is, that's what I read. So that's why I want to make sure that, maybe I don't have a current draft, maybe I don't, I'm not reading it right, but that's the way I read it.
Maybe you all have to do.
It's something, I mean, and that's, if, if that's true, it's something that my office wouldn't see, right? Because we're, we don't, we don't really watch the revenue, you know, we don't see the revenue, we see the spending. And in that case, if the revenue is never getting here, and spending is being done, we wouldn't see that spending either, and if there's not a trust fund created for the money to go into, then we wouldn't see it. In this case, that's why I want to set this up this way, so that there's a trust fund in place that we, that the dispersments can be controlled and audited.
Well, that was just like, I caught Comcast and Verizon money was going straight over to PCTV, and it was never coming through the city. I mean, it was unbelievable, and, you know, the people that take care of these meetings, so, people in the neighborhoods can view, wasn't getting a dime out of it. I mean, really, they were down to what, two, two or three people? And unbelievable, unbelievable. But it should be all going through you. I mean, as the Controller, you should be able to see.
Well, I mean, the Charter makes pretty clear that any contracts, any contracts that the city enters into, whether they're financial or not, even in cases that are just mere memorandum, that have to be countersigned by the city controller. So, if there are agreements out there that, and my question is this, if there are agreements like that out there, then they must be agreements that involve no money. Because you can't get, we can't, they wouldn't get paid if there's not a contract, right? So, there must be some diversion of money as well, as we're talking about in this case, which is a problem.
Which happened with the Comcast and the Verizon money. It wasn't coming through the books. And now it is. So, now we should be giving the money that is due to fix the cameras. You can't hear me as soon as you move it away from your mouth. Or if you turn your head, you can't hear us. Or if Teresa pushes the button here.
Yeah.
Or calls me on a telephone while I'm in the middle of doing my end, which I'm gonna talk during hers. But thank goodness.
I keep it lively.
We have you as our auditor and in your office. Now, the revenues that do come through, so how does this work with... I mean, I just hope we're not getting into a hole that we were once put into and just got out of Act Forty-seven. There is a lot of money that is being...
Well, I mean, you look at trends, you look at, you try to look forward to potential downturn in the economy, you know, what could happen. I do believe that, one thing I think we're very good about in this city is we're very conservative on our revenue estimates. So, I think that when you see that five-year plan, and I think we're very good year to year. But in the five-year plan, there is a little bit of, okay, what could happen? And, you know, and so, I think, you know, the Finance Department, Jen Gula and the other folks down there who kind of take a look at this stuff, they do a pretty good, they do a pretty good job of trying to figure out what potentially could go wrong, you know, and trying to account for it. But again, it is, those are estimates, and something could always go awry. And, but for right now, you know, I'm certainly confident in the estimates for 2020. And, you know, while we may disagree over a couple categories here and there, overall, I think those are good estimates.
Okay. Ian, do you have any audits that you're going to be doing? I mean, next year?
Yeah, we're gonna finish up, we do have to finish up the Public Works Audit and the Police Secondary Employment Audit. So, we're gonna do, finish those up, and then we'll be looking at what's next. We've, we try to get, we try to, we try to just work our way around each department. We never leave Public Works, and we never leave Public Safety. So, we're always, you know, those are the two biggest drivers. And so, you know, as we leave Police, we will, it's probably time for us to get back into EMS again, because we haven't done it for a while, and, you know, test, you know, test the response times and the things that we do in an EMS audit. But we will be discussing our schedule, you know, here within the next couple of weeks, about the things we want to accomplish next year. So, if you have ideas that you want us to look at, please let us know, because we will try to include them in our plans for next year.
I will do that. I will give you my wish list.
Okay. They don't all have to be on the North Side.
No, 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 citywide. And they are, however, you know, when we were just talking about the parks, I didn't want to let that one go. City View Park, which is Spring Hill City View, that park hasn't been touched since, it was, I think, the first Pepsi Park. Do you know how many years ago the Pepsi Park came in? Hasn't been touched since Splinters everywhere. So, they had it as the third one down on the list. But I'm thinking that any of this money, if it's... It should be all going into the general fund. Do you agree?
Well, it's gonna be, it's gonna come into the general fund as part of the tax collection process. It will then be moved over to a trust fund. You know, so, there will be a process that moves that millage over to a trust fund that we'll create in the next couple of weeks, I guess.
Well, I remember there was a time when we had trust fund after trust fund after trust.
Yeah, and I'm glad you mentioned it.
And it seems like it's starting to happen.
Exactly. And that's what we worry about. Because we did, we did a very good job about six or seven years ago in cleaning out old trust funds.
Right.
Bill was part of that process.
We were, some of us were, too.
Marty Elickin and our office, and we finally got down to a more manageable number of trust funds. And you're right, we're creeping up again, you know? So, we've, we have to be very careful not to, not to, if you're gonna, this trust fund, obviously, is created by Charter. So, it will be created. I mean, Council will still have to put policies and procedures in place, but it will be created. But there are a lot of, I do worry about the creation of more trust funds, because it just creates more work for us, because we're required to audit them every other year. And a lot of them aren't active, but we're still required to go through the process of writing a report about them, so.
And if they're new projects, it don't necessarily mean that it's going, like, the rad money is being spent on the employees.
Yeah, I mean, that's really, hey, this is, this is really up to you. I mean, it's up to Council to decide how they want to see this money spent and still staying within the constraints of the question, right? Or of the budget, or of the Charter Amendment. But I think there are a whole lot of ideas that could be, you know, considered here. Like I said, I think you want to, I think you want to hold, I think you want to hold it accountable to the rhetoric of that campaign, which is that underserved communities are gonna finally have parks and that there's gonna be matching dollars. You know, I think you want to make sure that those things happen before money gets dispersed.
And actually, that's what I thought the Conservancy was about, that we weren't funding them, that they were actually getting funding to keep their program alive and pull in funding for the parks.
You just pulled in a lot.
Yeah, and, you know, they raise money, they raise a lot of money. And they cover their expenses through the money that they raise. I think that the one event they do annually covers, basically covers their operating expenses for a year. But when you're talking about infrastructure projects, typically, it's project by project. So, you know, there are foundations who want, okay, I want to fund the frick Environmental Center, but I'm probably not gonna want to fund, you know, a parklet somewhere. You know, where another, another more neighborhood-based foundation may say, "Yeah, this is the kind of work we want to do, and we want to fund that." And the Parks Conservancy, I think, has tried to marshal a lot of that. At least, I think that's what they try to do, so.
Okay, well, we'll see when we talk to you more about that.
Yep.
So, Public Safety, I know there was something on Public Safety I wanted to ask you about. Oh, the secondary employment. Now, will you be, when you're doing this audit, you'll be checking the amount of money that we established that would come to the city? That it was going for what we established it for?
Well, that's a good question. I mean...
Not for, okay, we need a brand-new truck somewhere.
That's one of the questions that I have, frankly, about this audit.
Because I started that.
So, when the administrative fee was put into place.
Right.
So, that fee was then supposed to fund a trust fund for a specific purpose.
And the purpose was, on any secondary employment, if they got a tear in their pants, if they lost their badge, if, you know, there was a lawsuit. I mean, anything that dealt with secondary employment.
Yeah.
Anything.
That funds could be used for that.
Right.
I would agree.
Not to exaggerate.
I'll agree and disagree. I'm gonna agree with you that that may have been your intent. I'll disagree with you that that was ever codified in language passed by this Council, which is one of the concerns that we have. Because I don't know that Council has ever revisited the actual procedures and policies around the dispersment of those funds.
It was supposed to be exactly, you know, I mean, we started it in an executive session.
I remember the discussion clearly. I don't know that it ever actually made its way into a resolution or an ordinance. That'll probably end up being one of the recommendations of the audit.
Yes.
We'll take it, yeah.
Okay, really? Because that's what the whole intent, as the author of that, that was the intent for lawsuits. You know, if they lost their telephone, if they dented a vehicle, you know, torn clothes, eating, you know, something that had to do with secondary employment and secondary employment only. And if we thought we were getting too far up there, then you could lower the amount of money that you were taking. It don't seem like it's working that way at all.
We'll see. We're gonna finish that audit soon, so we'll have more to say about it then.
Okay. I forgot there was something else you were talking about, but, yeah, I would, I would just hope that we're watching the borrowing. And I think we're up there in the high numbers already.
But, you know, we are, but we are at a stage right now, first off, I believe in borrowing for long-term projects, right? So, that when you have a, you know, when you have a bridge that's gonna last fifty years, you want to fund it over fifty years.
Absolutely.
However that works. So, I do think the city's gotten a lot better about that, about that kind of capital borrowing. We are borrowing more because we have the ability to borrow more. You know, we had a big drop in our debt service payments over the last couple of years. And now, we're in a position where our debt service is in compliance with your debt service policy. So, we are below, I think we, the policy has tried to be below ten percent, and we're below that now as far as debt service as compared to budget. So, we have what I would call, right now, a reasonable borrowing plan to fund capital projects.
And capital projects are usually the length of a bond.
Right, right. So, you want the, you want the life of the asset to match the length of the borrowing, right? Now, it doesn't always happen. But the city's gotten pretty good about not borrowing for short-term assets and covering those in the general fund. There are probably some exceptions. My guess is, I'll have to look, but I think we did use some bond money for police vehicle purchases, and they tend not to last very long.
They only last a year or two, really.
Yeah, so, so those kind of things happen.
Asphalting. A street doesn't, well, on a major street doesn't.
But the other thing is that we are transferring pay-as-you-go money. You know, we're transferring fund balance into the capital budget. So, arguably, you know, some of that money is not going, you know, we're not really borrowing that spending, so.
Okay. I had this question. Do we ever, do you ever look into what Jordan Tax Service is doing for us?
You know, I haven't, because, you know, their service is so revenue-related that it's not something that we really look at. Now, we can look at what we're spending, and the truth of the matter is, we're not spending anything on that contract. You know, that contract is paid for by the individual taxpayers.
Right.
The delinquent taxpayers pay those fees. And they're a problem. I mean, the fees are exorbitant and can be very difficult.
Do you see them paying more?
I would say that we had, that the delinquent tax collection was going very well until this year. You know, we've seen a drop this year, which is probably more a function of us not filing liens over the last couple of years than anything else, so.
Okay. Okay, well, thanks for all you do, Michael.
Thank you.
And thank you, too, and your office.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you very much.
Dog is his name. Thank you.
That's Emma Smith.
Thank you, thank you. I just want to thank you both for the work you've done over the years. Just to keep it brief, because there's another hearing waiting. A while back, it's a while back, you had audited a portion of the school district. And I wonder if maybe, given all the circumstances surrounding the school district this year, is that a possibility for this coming year?
So, you know, we have staff at the school district. They are paid for by the school district budget. And their job out there is the basic job of paying the invoices. So, they look at the invoices and they pay them based on whether or not the proper authorizations are in place and whether it's a proper expenditure. The only thing that we really audit out there are the monies that are in the schools themselves. So, the activities funds, those kind of things. Now, it's not a lot of money, but it's the money that most often gets stolen. So, it's important that someone do that audit, because those are the monies that end up missing. And we've had that happen. We've had to refer cases to the district attorney for those funds going missing. I would love the opportunity to do a more extensive performance-type audit out there. I don't have that authority. That's...
You have to be invited in, correct?
I have to be invited in, and even then, I'd have to have budget for it. So, you know, so, like, I can't put city employees out there auditing the school district. So, we'd have to, we'd have to figure out how to do that and have the funding in place for it. The Auditor General has much more authority when it comes to auditing the schools than I do. And so, and when we have something bigger like that, we'll refer it, we'll refer it up to the Auditor General, which we did in this most recent case of what we thought was, were problematic spending, you know? Clearly, I mean, one thing that we can tell you is that we've done certain reviews with respect to contract procedures, you know, no-bid contracts, which are legal. We still think it's problematic when there's not more transparency around contracting. We had issues out there with respect to purchase cards, you know, the credit cards that are getting more use here in the city as well, which we're starting to see that, which is a problem, too. So, just want to have better control on that kind of spending. And out there, they just didn't have very good policies in place. I think the city, you have pretty good, we have pretty good policies in place here on that, because the P-cards come before you at your meetings, so you see them. There's more transparency around it. You see the spending. You see where it was spent. You see what was purchased. Where out there, there was just sort of a review of the bills, and you could see where the money was spent, but you never knew for sure what people were buying. And so, I talked to School Board Member Udine about it. And he was working on some language to try to tighten up what they're doing out there and make it more similar to what we do here.
Okay. And as far as, I'm just gonna say, as far as the Parks Conservancy, I want to thank you for your help on that. But I do believe that there's some agreements that you may not have, because we know one in Mount Washington, that was between the CDC and the Parks Conservancy. There was nothing really signed from the city, but yet they were doing the work as if it were, so.
Yeah, and see, those are the ones that we are gonna have a problem with, right? Because we're not a party to it, and so, we're gonna have to rely on Council and others to kind of push us in the right direction on some of that. Because if it's not in our system, we're gonna have to find out where it is, whether there are side agreements.
But I wonder if it's agreements or contracts have to be submitted to the Controller. So, if it's an agreement...
If the city's not a party, then it wouldn't be here, right? So, but, but in that case, the Mount Washington CDC, CDC had an agreement with the city. And so, we have that agreement.
Okay.
If the CDC then went in, if the Parks Conservancy basically came in and replaced the CDC as the party, which is basically what happened there.
Right.
There should be some kind of new signatory page created, you know, to hold everyone to that agreement.
It's not signed. It's not signed.
Right, so, so that should have happened. So, if that's happening, you know, we're gonna have to take a look at those invoices and see what's... and see what's happening there.
Thank you.
Sure. So I will be very, very brief. I have already asked our law department, I think the Parks Conservancy issue will come up next year, uh, from what I understand is that we're actually, it won't come up till next year, but I have asked the law department to, um, to send me, um, exactly what the, what the question demands, right? So that we are living up to what the question demands. Um, and my understanding of it.
I, can I just say, I hope it happens this year because I think next year we don't know what the votes will be like, but go ahead.
I do not think the tax bills, they're not in this year's budget, Terry. They're not in this year's budget, so I don't think it will.
It's supposed to be a month from now.
Yeah, but a month from now, we will have already, a month from now, we will have passed the budget. It will be next year. It will not be, I do not think, I, I'm, I guess, I'm, I'm just guessing, reading the back of the tea leaves, I just do not think it will come before us next, this, this year. But when it does come before us, there's two things I will be insis, well, my understanding is putting the money in a trust fund is a different process than taking the money out of the trust fund. I am less concerned about the money going into the trust fund. I am more interested in the money coming out of the trust fund. And the other thing I am, I am, I am just, I am only one council person, but I will be insistent about is that that be an annual budgetary council-approved process. That every year, like every other part of, it's like you're coming before us, that they would have to come before us with a budget detailing what their projects were, where the matching money was, that it would be transparent and that before we released any dollars, they would have to then come up so that annually council would have a chance to read, similar to the, to the Housing Opportunity Fund, right? That the council would have an opportunity to approve, disapprove, or manipulate projects that they've, that they are, that they are submitting. Um, I would, I will not give them a blank slate of dollars to use at their own discretion for their own devices. The other thing is, and the other thing is I've said is this, I'm, I'm sort of in the, trust but verify, right, of camp. What I am concerned about is this, and I do not know their own level of diversity in their own organization, right? A lot of their language has to talk about underserved communities and diversity, yet I am not convinced that their own internal policy is consistent with that goal. And so if you're not 25%, which we are 25% African-American city, for example, if your organization is also, has not reached the same diversity of our city, then I don't necessarily, um, um, prior to this distribution, you know, I, I don't necessarily have great confidence then that you're going to put the, the needs of that community in the forefront if over the last, you know, 10 years, five years, diversity has not been your, has not been your mission. Then I begin to wonder whether or not just a, that was not just a convenient way for you to get the referendum passed if you have not shown a historic track record to diversity and inclusion over the last 10 years. So I'll be looking at that sort of commitment. And the other thing is it doesn't say where the, who the money goes to. It does not name a specific partner, right? There may, it may be three or four different entities, um, that could apply and participate in, in funding. And so, um, I am going to be, I am going to say, well, matter of fact, I'll put this marker on the table today. The council of the city of Pittsburgh controls the expenses of the city of Pittsburgh. Any entity that wants expenses from the city of Pittsburgh is going to have to deal with this council at this table at a minimum on an annual basis. So this whole idea, and I, I, I will, I, I'm only one council person, but I will fight against any money that's going directly to an organization that does not have an annual discussion with this council and a, and, and a direct, hands-on directional interchange with us. Maybe I'm saying that wrong, right? But I'm laying my cards on the table from the very beginning. And so, um, I have not, I, I on purpose did not say things during the, during the referendum because I wanted the, the people to speak and they have spoken. But I'm a member of council and I am not going to relinquish the authority of council to any non-elected group of individuals. So that's, I didn't mean to say all that, but that's, that's where I'm at, right? Notice I haven't talked about the projects, right? I'm not, I'm not saying which project should be done. I'm really concerned about the process and that the process, and, and you've talked a little bit about that.
And I agree with you. I, I agree with you that the, the process has to be discussed and codified by this council. And whatever that process is for approving dispersment of these funds, that, that's really in the hands of council. And, uh, and I would, I would add to, to your concerns, um, not only should they show a, a respect for diversity, um, but they should also have an understanding of transparency. Um, because if they're going to be spending public dollars, then they have to behave like a public entity and they, they, they can't play by their own rules. You know, they have to play by yours or ours. And so I would, uh, I would encourage the kind of things that we do where we put all our contracts online, you know? It's a very easy thing to do. Certainly, the, an organization, some of these organizations certainly have the wherewithal to be able to do that kind of thing.
So I will, I guess, my thoughts, although we've not talked about this publicly, is that you would be involved in this process with us so that we have all of our city, the mayor's office, your office, council office, that all of us in a very open and transparent way would lay all of our ideas on the table, um, similar to what we did with the parking, um, the solution to, to our pensions, right? We had a very open process where everybody participated. We all agreed, disagreed. At the end of the day, we came up with a, a, a solution we could all live with. I'm hoping to do that same sort of very open, 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 very, very open process and I'm not in any hurry in for this process to occur. I am not for it to be completed. I doesn't, it won't, you know, we can take two years. It does, I'm not in a hurry for this process to be completed and to, because I'm more concerned about it being right than I am concerned about it being now. You know, I'm, I'm talking too much.
Yeah, I'm happy to participate.
All right, yeah.
Just one brief, uh, comment you had mentioned in the beginning. Uh, the, it's under the tuition reimbursement on item 2780?
Yes.
Is that, that was the amount you're concerned about? If there's any other changes that you feel you need within the budget, let us know.
Okay.
And lastly, um, and I, I mean, this goes without saying, Ms. Lam, you know, your level of professionalism, expertise, um, and commitment to our city is unparalleled and unmatched and you are, uh, one of the rare treasures of our city.
The district two resident.
We are, we are extremely grateful.
Mount Washington.
We're extremely grateful for your, for your service. Um, in the private industry, you could be making five times this amount of money, but you have done this as a, at a, at a personal sacrifice and a personal commitment. I do not want you to ever think that your, your service to the city goes unnoticed and unappreciated.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
If there's, if there is no other comments, I will decrease and Councilwoman Harris will take over and the next, uh, the next hearing is on the Commission of Human Relations.
Commission of Human Relations.
And then I think we have, City Plan after that.
Thank you, thank you both.
I'll start while we change chairs. Um, the Commission on Human Relations is the official civil rights agency for the city of Pittsburgh and is empowered by chapters 651 through 659 of the city code to enforce civil rights laws, eliminate discrimination and deal with matters of, uh, intergroup conflict. Uh, the 2020 budget highlights for the Commission of Human Relations, total operating budget, uh, $536,000, an increase of $90,000, uh, dollars or 20%. Total full-time positions in all three funds, eight, the same as in previous years. Uh, position changes of note, secretary removed, replaced with fiscal and contracting coordinator, a $2,800 increase, minor changes in the allocations between trust funds and general funds. Uh, non-salary subclass, uh, subclasses changed across three lines, uh, simply a net increase of approximately $5,000. Uh, there is also the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission Trust Fund, uh, projected in 2020, beginning balance of $61,000, anticipated 2020 grant from the federal government, $35,000, same as prior years, projected spending $43,170, a decrease of $21,590. Also is the, uh, HUD Trust Fund, uh, projected, uh, beginning balance $335,000, anticipated 2020 grant from federal government, $70,000, the same as in 2019, a change in projected spending, $143,873, an increase of $12,600. Uh, the capital funding, there's $100,000 in Community Development Block Grant Fund for, uh, fair housing, the same as, uh, in prior years.
Okay.
Thank you, Megan Stanley, Director of the Pittsburgh Commission on Human Relations. Um, I, I'm sorry, our deputy director, Wes Sperry, had to leave. We are leading a community engagement meeting this evening in about an hour, so I'm a little bit short on time.
Where's that?
That's at the East End Cooperative Ministry, so we'll be releasing some of our data visualization project, but, um.
We'll move you along.
What was that?
We'll move you along.
Okay. Um, yeah, if I could quickly just go over some of the things that have happened in 2019, it's been a big year for the commission. Um, as you know, we have had some turnover, but we've also had some really great legislative successes, thanks to all of you, so I appreciate your support throughout this year. Um, so, so far this year, we hired our, a dedicated outreach and intake staff, which we never had before and really has helped get the word out about the commission and the work that we do. We also started doing community-based intake. We know it's really hard for people to come between the hours of, you know, 8:30 and 4:30 to this building, many of whom are facing employment discrimination and have to ask their employers for time off to file a complaint against them and we realize how hard that is. So we are now doing, um, intake sessions in the community in the evening and local libraries and places like that so that it's more accessible to the public. We also passed legislation, as you know, thanks to you all, um, to protect pregnant workers and their partners with the first place in the country to do that. And I recently saw a legal blog talking about Pittsburgh being a leader in the nation. Um, we updated and expanded our SOGI protections during the Stonewall Anniversary Press Conference. We also made chapter 651 through 659 of city code gender-inclusive and I hope that we can do that with all city code. Um, we started our data visualization project with the Create Lab and that's what we will be, um, starting community feedback on tonight. We increased the number of settlements in our cases, which has been a big focus of mine to over 40% from about 10% when I started. Um, increased housing case closures over the last year by 30%. We have updated all of our outreach materials in, to be translated into 11 different languages and we piloted a youth curriculum at, um, Liberty K5 and also in one of the city parks locations this summer.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Deb, do you want to start?
You know, I actually, I'm, I think we're running out of steam because it's been a very, very long day and we've been at this table since 10:00 this morning, um, because I'm not coming up with any good policy questions. I apologize because I'm just kind of running dry here. Um, I, if you could maybe just tell me a little bit about the Create Lab partnership, I'm just curious.
Sure, so, you know, one of my issues with the commission is I think we do great work, but we tend to be a very reactive agency. We wait for people to come file complaints and then we go and investigate. But we're also charged in city code with doing outreach and really, I think, being more proactive. Um, and so we have entered into an agreement using our, um, our CDBG funding part of that, um, to do data visualizations around fair housing, looking from 1990 to today and then into the future, you know, what are the issues? We have seen that redlining still exists, that mortgage applications are largely denied by race, that that is a huge factor and it's really keeping people from building assets and staying in the community. We have a huge loss in the black population. So issues that you've heard about in other reports, but really data-driven, so it targets our outreach. I'm hoping it will help with more conscientious development. So when, um, things come to you as members of council and, you know, we're looking at housing impact statements that you really have data and you can visualize and we, we nicely outlined council districts for you so you can see like this is my district and this is what's happening there.
So another day soon when my battery is recharged and my brain, I will, um, ask you all the same questions I've been asking, I asked the controller and the URA, the mayor's office about kind of what are the gender and racial and class-based impacts of things that not only that we budget for, but that we, um, give out like Lourdes.
So, so we now have a way to visualize that and I loved hearing you ask about that and I wanted to say, um, you know, our partnership now, this is the first government contract with the Create Lab. They already have the Earthtime platform that can show all of this data. So if, for example, the controller's office gives the, um, data to them, they can very quickly visualize that. You can see where the impacts are going, if that's skewed towards one.
I think Xer already has it geo-coded.
Yeah, so great.
Yeah, so it should be even easier, at least from last year's kind of just spreadsheet of which the parcel data's, you know, so they've got the parcel, the strange lot and block numbers, but then I think I had Bob Gradyka, Xer already like geo-coded.
Yes, and so we work with Bob as well and he works, um, also with the Create Lab. So in partnership with all of them and, and that's the wonderful thing, we can do that really quickly. And I just sort of gave a sneak peek of this data that we're showing tonight to the Office of Equity and, you know, uh, the Director of the Gender Equity Commission said, can you add gender data? That same day, we were able to add some gender data to show, um, impacts across gender on things like housing and, and development, so.
Fantastic, let's set a date, we'll talk more. Thank you for your work.
Thank you for your work. Um, I know when, uh, the previous director was here, he did some, um, mediation between, uh, the predominantly African-American community and some of the immigrant community. And it seems like there's a lot of need for that late, in the city and I've noticed it a lot, um, in some of the most, uh, you know, horrific cases that we've seen lately. Um, I think that those kinds of things could, probably could have played a better role, um, having some mediation. Um, could you tell me what the efforts are in that area and if they'll continue those efforts and?
Sure, so we, you know, we are charged in city code with helping, um, alleviate community tension and part of that really is going and mediating. So I've, for example, worked with, um, the Office of Nighttime Economy when issues have come up around, um, certain bars, for example, have dress codes and those dress codes seem like they might be race-based and that causes community tension. Or they're saying if you're not, um, from the US, you can't have alcohol and, you know, different things that we feel are both discriminatory and are causing community tension. Um, and so there have been efforts to mediate those and I would love to do more. Actually, myself, our deputy director and one of our investigators who is also a licensed attorney, um, just finished our formal mediation training, so we are now all fully trained and certified to do that.
Are you doing it more for groups or individual, if there's some, an issue between individuals, I mean, tell me?
I mean, we do it a lot for our cases. As I mentioned, you know, we went from settling 10% of cases to 40%, which is a great outcome because then both parties are able to get something out of that process and we don't just have to rely on a legal analysis. Um, but we're definitely open to doing it for groups and have been doing it for some groups and anytime you hear about those issues, if somebody's calling your office, please let us know. Um, you know, recently, one of the police officers reached out and said, we've got a community tension issue between some neighbors, can you come in and do something? We're always happy to do that and as I said, we now have three of our eight staff trained to do that.
Okay, great. That's why I want to make sure that those efforts are continuing because I think there seems to be a, a real need. And I know just in my district alone, there's several issues that we've reached out before and they've helped with.
Right, right. And, you know, outside of just those, um, mediations, you know, we are just holding a lot more outreach events and have a greater presence in the community to let people know you have rights and if those are violated, to please let us know. Um, and also if you're not sure, if you just want us to come and talk to different parties or groups, we're happy to do that, so we have really increased those efforts.
Thank you, thank you for your work.
Thank you. I know we did start doing, uh, some of the outreach and trying to get the neighborhoods to know you were there.
Right.
Um, and I still don't think everyone knows you're there yet, so, but.
Well, half the people don't know we're here.
We'll get there.
We've been in the same office for 64 years and hoping in year 65, you know, I think we have our goal to increase, you know, awareness, but I'll say word of mouth is still our number one referral source. So we take out ads on Facebook and Google and we do all of these things and at the end of the day, it's still somebody said, hey, I got something really good out of this process. And I, again, I think increasing that mediation really helps people feel good about the work that we're doing and they tell other people about it. Unfortunately, we can't always find, you know, legally that there was something we can, um, investigate, but we do want to help.
Yeah, we, we, and one of my districts had a language barrier and, uh, I, uh, asked if we could get some funding in there so that we could have somebody that would interpret, um, because a lot of times the older people, you know, they're not going to school to learn how to speak English and there's a barrier there. And, and we find a lot, a lot more happen in soothing a lot of uprising just by having an interpreter there.
And, you know, legally, we, we take federal funds and so we are obligated to provide services in the language of somebody's choosing, um, which is why we, you know, we've increased to 11 different languages for our materials and we have interpreters on hand. to 11 different languages for our materials, and we have interpreters on hand.
I didn't realize that, I didn't realize that.
Yes, and last, in 2019, we got all of them corrected and retranslated, so spent a large amount of our HUD money doing that, because we do have this obligation since we receive those federal funds.
Well, thank you for all you're trying to do, and I, I hope that by word-of-mouth and also by council members, you can get more out into the communities, more than you would wish, you'd have to have a bigger budget for later on.
Well, I'd love to be out of a job and for there to be no discrimination.
Right. It's a shame, I dare it. Okay, if there's nothing else, thank you for being here, and I guess I will pass this over to Councilwoman Gross for planning.
Thank you all. Good luck with your meeting.
Sure.
I thought that was the last one, I'm sorry.
The Department of City Planning is next, and the Department of City Planning establishes and sustains an orderly and consistent approach to land use in the city of Pittsburgh that incorporates sustainability, city design, resilience, equity, and opportunity in its work. The overriding goal is to sustain and enhance a thriving city of neighborhoods for people who live, work, learn, and visit here. The 2020 budget highlights for the Department of City Planning, total budget, $4,116,000, the decrease of $447,000. Total full-time positions are 48 this year, that's a decrease of three, plus funding for zoning board members and interns. Salary and position changes of note, for those folks who are watching this morning, the GIS Division has been transferred to the Department of Innovation and Performance. That's four positions, including GIS Manager, GIS Coordinator, and two GIS Analysts. Planner twos were increased from eight to 13, for a total increase of $273,000. Land Use Policy and Code Implementation Coordinator was also added, a cost of $72,000. The Deputy Director position was removed at $101,000 savings, and so was the ADA Coordinator, savings of $66,000. Open Space Specialist was also removed, $47,000. Housing Specialist removed, $43,000. Historic Preservation Specialist removed, $45,600. One of the three community liaisons were increased to Community Affairs Manager, that's an addition of $4,400. One of three principal planners were downgraded to Senior Planner, that's a $2,900 savings. Arts, Culture, and History Specialist was increased by $6,200. Also, the budget is no longer anticipating any salary reimbursements from some of the foundations, help support some of the positions, a loss of $57,710. Subclass changes of note, professional services decreased by $317,000. Four components of the comprehensive plan that were budgeted, and here in 2019, the Heritage Plan, the Art Plan, the Housing Component, Neighborhood Plans are not funded in 2020. Computer Maintenance decreased by $93,500 due to GIS Division expenses being transferred to IMP, as well as four smaller subclass changes totaling $4,000. City Planning has a few capital projects. In the capital projects, ADA Compliance, $50,000 of CDBG funds, a $10,000 increase from prior years. Cultural Heritage Plan, $40,000 in Pago and $40,000 matching, same as in 2019. War Memorials and Public Art, $50,000, same as previous years. Consultants Plans and Studies, $225,000 in Pago, and $100,000 in matching. 2020 Deliverables are the Hayes Woods Master Plan and Westinghouse Park Planning. There is no additional funding for the Comprehensive Plan in 2020. City Planning also has several trust funds. Stormwater Management Trust Fund, the current balance is $560,000. Open Space Trust Fund, current balance $91,700. Green Initiatives Trust Fund, $72,000. The Pages Trust Fund, current balance zero, likely transferred to IMP. The Lead Building Trust Fund was never implemented, still on the books, and the Parks Trust Fund is yet to be determined, but may include a city planning component. City Planning Department is in charge of Parks Master Plans, Sheridan completed last week. Westinghouse Park and Hayes Wood Plan, as I mentioned, is in the 2020 budget. The Department of City Planning also has several revenue line items that is responsible for. Those are mostly zoning fees, there's filing for subdivision of lots, and also zoning research, historical review, property certification, and temporary occupancy permits. The total amount of revenue budgeted for 2020 is $2125,000 from those fees and permits, a change of $698,000 from 2019.
Thank you, Director. I'm just gonna let the Director, Assistant Director, or Acting Director Dash, forgive me.
That's all right.
Jump right in, because again, council members have been in chambers now since 10 o'clock this morning.
Yeah, so, we'll try to keep things brief.
Three of us have them.
That's true.
And I'll, you know, I'll introduce myself and then have the other folks introduce themselves. I'm Andrew Dash, I'm the Acting Director of the Department of City Planning, and also the Manager of the Strategic Planning Division.
I'm Grant Irvin, I'm the Assistant Director for Sustainability and Resilience.
I'm Corey Lehman, I'm an Assistant Director in the department, I'm the Zoning Administrator, and I manage the Zoning and Development Review Division.
In addition to those divisions, the primary divisions of the Department of City Planning, we also have Public Art and Civic Design Division. We are currently advertising for the manager for that, for that division. So, you know, as was stated, you know, our main goals are to really establish and sustain orderly and consistent land use across the city. You know, our job is to develop and implement policy and code changes relative to that, and really ultimately to, you know, have kind of a sustainable city of neighborhoods that our policy and other work is able to enhance. You know, so where you see that, we see that from citywide policy that we do around, you know, whether that be the Climate Action Planning work or One PGH or our Comprehensive Plan, to district-level planning, which happens through our Parks Master Planning or happens through our neighborhood planning work. We work on a lot of regulations and code changes, and then with our partner departments or authorities on implementation in a number of ways. So, 2019 for us was a year of change, you know, both at a staffing level, where, you know, from a number of neighborhood planners changing, and so, the, you know, the interaction with you all as council members and the community organizations that we had some of this change. We also had a change in Director, and that Director Gastel left in July, and so, I've been the Acting Director for the last five months. And in all of that, back in May, in coordination with our, you know, PLI, we went through, you know, kind of the transition into the one-stop PGH program. So, with all of that change, you know, I think there have been a lot of things that the department feels have been a positive benefit for the city. In the, you know, in that transition of the permit system, there have been a lot of benefits, both in convenience to applicants, in that, you know, almost 40% of our permit applications are currently being filed online, a third of those are being filed off of normal business hours. You know, there's been greater definition in, Corey, in the Zoning and Development Review Shop as to what items require permits, and trying, you know, trying to streamline the process for folks that for certain types of sheds or, you know, accessory buildings or other things, that we've actually reduced the permits, the number of permits that people need as a part of that process. We've, we've also been piloting a number of project, or programs over 2019, one of those being the Performance Targets Program, which we've been working with large institutional developers, one being the UPMC Vision Rehab Hospital, where we were able to get, work through issues of energy and transportation and stormwater to, you know, to be able to have, to get more out of those developments than necessarily code requires, and so, we were able to, you know, through discussions and work with the institution and their representatives, be able to get improvements beyond just the minimum of the code.
And so, we're calling those performance targets?
Yes, that's the program. And, and also, in that program, have worked with Pitt, Duquesne, and Carlo, which have all come through for their institutional master planning process, which is something that they're required to do every 10 years through the Planning Commission and the zoning process. In addition to that, there's been kind of a number of different policy guidance that the department has created in 2019, from work with Working Group of Residents to create a public engagement guide, as to how not only planning, but other departments works on public engagement and long-range, and long-range processes. One of the, one of the things that you'll be seeing in 2020 is that we'll be, you know, creating and posting public engagement plans from the beginning of a process, as to what the engagement strategy is for, for every, you know, for every plan that planning is doing. Another piece is, you know, now that we've, and I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but now that we've completed our first round of neighborhood plans, we have created and had adopted a Neighborhood Plan Guide. So, that Neighborhood Plan Guide looks at how the city does planning for neighborhoods in the future, and the idea there was really to be transparent, open, and have that publicly available to everyone, to know if people want to undertake a city-adopted neighborhood planning process, what those steps are, and how, whether that's the city leading that process, or a registered community organization leading that process, what the steps are that they need to take.
So, for example, instead of just being a pretty brochure for the neighborhood, a plan could actually be given the force of law by being codified?
Yes, and the intent is that not only in development decisions that may happen at one of our boards or commissions, but also in our work on, you know, city budget decisions around, you know, land use, mobility, and some of these other items, that neighborhoods are really determining their own, their vision for their community, and, you know, that the Planning Department is working with them to try to translate those visions into, into actual implementation. So, and another is, you know, work that we've done over, you know, kind of on a more global scale, doing things like the city's adoption of the UN Sustainable Development Goals. And so, a lot of those things are things that, you know, were new for us in 2019. And in addition, especially with you, Councilwoman, development of new zoning tools, including, you know, work on the inclusionary zoning in our Implanting Overlay District, which is one of the first mandatory inclusionary zoning ordinances in Pennsylvania. And, you know, in addition to that, you know, doing work on legislation, conservation district legislation around, you know, will be something that we worked with a working group over 2019, we'll be bringing to council in 2020, and then with the legislation that's put in the zoning code for city buildings to be achieving net zero, is another, another item of legislative change. So, we've had those new things that have happened while we've, you know, been enhancing, you know, the existing programs, like I said, concluding our first round of the neighbor, of the city's neighborhood planning program, which was created about three years ago. So, we've completed now the EcoInnovation District in Uptown, Hazelwood, Homewood, and Manchester Chateau Neighborhood Plans, and then have launched into a planning education series and urban design workshops in Oakland in anticipation of work that we'll be doing in 2020. We've continued our Parks Master Planning work, you know, and, you know, working with Department of Public Works over implementation of the work that we did in Southside Park, where right now, they're working on the Phase One Construction Project, and then working to complete, we have a meeting this Thursday, you know, where we'll be releasing the draft master plan of Sheridan Park's master plan to, to the community and getting their feedback on that, and begun the process in both Emerald View and Fort Pitt Parks with master planning as well. You know, other work has been implementation of the city's Climate Action Plan, restoration work of our public art war memorials. We've actually been able to do three times the, you know, the annual work in, you know, in 2019 than we have in past years, relative to restoration of our war memorials and public art, and then, you know, the implementation of the Registered Community Organization Program. So, you know, looking into our budget for next year, you know, we will be beginning the second phase of neighborhood plans in Oakland and Hill District, while also working on, in some neighborhoods that don't necessarily have the resources or the capacity to go into a neighborhood planning process, and so, we'll be beginning vision work in Lincoln, Leamington, and East Hills with, with budget that was, you know, in our budget from River and Burgess. We will be continuing to work on a citywide land use plan, and so, in some of those neighborhoods where there's not a neighborhood plan, really being able to provide some of the benefits through a publicly-driven scenario planning exercise in 2020, to create that land use map for us as a city, which then, as we do, is, as then, we can move forward with neighborhood plans, and some of these neighborhoods that have not seen them before, I'll be able to dig deeper into the vision of those neighborhoods from that scenario planning work. Series of zoning code and policy updates are here in our code, doing work with the Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance and Accessory Dwelling Unit Ordinances, that are things that are pilot ordinances that we'll be completing, updating the city's Stormwater Management Code, which is Title 13 of the city code, and then there is the Sawmill Run Zoning and Open Space Study that was, that was a budget item from Councilman Cockhill. And then, you know, kind of continuing on our work on city energy policy as well, with continued policy and ordinance updates, and further collaboration with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. The budget items that are in our budget are things that we're using to, to get other funds, so our, you know, from our Parks Master Planning work, getting state funding for, you know, to match that, to the Arcs and Parks Program, which we recently came to council for, we received $500,000 from the Regional Asset District to continue that program, to cultural heritage planning and our climate challenge work. So, that's kind of our highlights, I'd be happy to, you know, to take any questions with the other Directors here.
Members, are you ready for questions? You ready to go? All right, so we start with Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you. I'll be quick, that's why.
No, 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 that don't seem right.
I raised my hand.
You're supposed to start this way.
Go ahead, do you want to?
No, go ahead. Don't leave the room afterwards.
I respect you, I'm gonna leave. I respect the fact that you've been here for every meeting. The RCOs, I still have concerns with those, but I'd like to talk to you a little bit more about those. I, you know, one minute I like it, the next minute I think, ah, no, this is not okay. So, I don't know, I'd like to talk a little bit more. You said you had an amendment, was that you who said today?
For...
I thought somebody talked about having an amendment for that today.
For which one, I'm sorry?
The RCOs.
I don't have an amendment ready, but I think a number of council members have, now that we've had it for a while, have questions.
Yeah, someone mentioned it today.
Do we have to prepare notes?
Yeah, during one of the meetings, I apologize, but somebody mentioned it. I want to thank you for your work on Sheridan Park and the master plan. I said, for the first time, I actually feel bad for city planning, because I see so many cuts here, and you're doing so much more work. I mean, you really are doing a lot of work, so we'll work together on...
I would be happy to, thank you.
On some stuff, yeah. And I'd really also, Councilwoman Gross and I are going to talk about the LURDA amendments and maybe working on, having it go by zoning instead of some of the things that we haven't placed here, but we want to make sure that there's some incentive for the southwest of the river, and so, I'll give you one more thing that we want to work with you on. But I just want to thank you all for your work. I think I really want to mention Sophia, I mean, she has been amazing, she goes to all the, so many meetings and pulled in so many different directions, and so, I just really want to acknowledge her, getting, looking forward to working with our new planner for Mount Washington, and that's about it, but I just really want to thank you. Thank you all for your work.
Okay, and happy to talk further offline or otherwise around the RCO legislation.
Okay, thank you. Somebody mentioned it here today, I don't remember who it was, though. Yeah, I was, I was like, oh, they're gonna amend it, okay, I'll have to play it back. I don't know if I could listen to the whole thing, I had to find it.
It was Councilman Kraus.
Was it?
Yes.
Okay, it was Councilman Kraus.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, thank you for paying attention. You showed your resilience, too, I mean, by sitting out there all day, waiting for us to call you.
Thank you for your patience as well, but it's been a long afternoon.
Yeah, so, thank you, thank you all for your work.
Uh, Councilwoman Harris?
Hey, so, you're down 10%. I don't know, I see city planning just, it's gradually going out the door. I mean, do you realize how much city planning used to be responsible for? All the planning, and, you know, it was city planning... All the planning, and, you know, it was city planning that did it all, and the only thing the URA was there for is to, for you to get money to do the projects in the community. I just see, it's sad, I see that, you know, as it's gradually, I don't know.
Well, even though...
Now, go ahead.
I was just saying, even though that's happened, you know, I think the mayor spoke to it when, you know, he was, you know, here for, you know, I mean, you know, the, with the institution and the Neighborhood Planning Program, I mean, it is the Department of City Planning that is, that is leading and doing Neighborhood Planning here in the city of Pittsburgh, and so...
And should be, and should be.
And whether that's, you know, whether that's things that are funded directly through the capital in our operating budget by you all as city council, or projects like when we did Homewood out of the first phase, or the Hill District that are being funded by the URA, the Redevelopment Authority, they are projects that are led, you know, well, led by the community truly, but really facilitated by, by the Department of City Planning.
Well, I, I know, I forget which one of you I've talked to, might not even have been one of you, but the neighborhoods, the neighborhoods would, didn't have to ask for you to be there, you were there and helped them follow through on whatever they were doing. If anybody knew the neighborhoods better, it was city planning, because you were the planners to get things done for them, not all this. And it was all done in one department, and it saved a lot of money. Now, what is this that the Coordinator of ADA is being removed?
So, that position was, that position was changed, and so it was, so we, we aren't removing the ADA Coordinator position from the department. It was, when the, when that position was rehired, it was rehired as a Planner Two, and that, the reflection of that was made permanent in the 2020 budget.
But it's...
So, the position, the position itself, the position itself still exists. We were, were able to find somebody that's great for the position and working with our City County Task Force and Disabilities and working to, you know, to try to develop a program for ADA, kind of built on the foundation of, you know, the work that Richard Meritz had done for us for so long.
Right.
But, but yes, so we do have...
That's who I thought of as soon as I seen it.
So, no, the position, the position is not, you know, that position is one of the, you know, is one of the Planner Two increases, so we have a number of Planner Twos that were increased in our budget. The removal of the ADA Coordinator is one of those Planner Twos.
Okay, so that Planner Two, we would say ADA, so the community knows there's somebody out there.
Yes, it has a separate job description than our other Planner Twos do, so we have, some of our Planner Twos have different, different job descriptions, and we have one that is specifically the Planner Two ADA Coordinator, and it has all of, you know, it's all of its, all of Hillary, Hillary Roman is the person that we have in that position. Her entire work plan is around the ADA program with the, with the city and with the Department of City Planning.
Hey, 'cause gosh, we don't need to lose that, and it will still be in city planning, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, okay, and where else did you lose money here? The decrease of 10%? You're not giving the big raises out, right?
So, I mean, you know, obviously, a number of those, a number of the position swaps that are there, you know, were, you know, some of them were increases, there were some of those that were decreases as well. There was the removal of the Deputy Director position, the GIS positions were proposed to be moved to the Department of Innovation and Performance.
Okay, and, I don't know. Well, you still have the historic piece.
We do, yes.
There was an entire position removed, though, at 45,000.
That, that is, that is another one of the additional Planner Two positions. So, actually, there's a person who's been in that position for around six years now, has taken on more responsibility as time has gone on, so it was requested by, you know, the department and in the proposed budget that, that Historic Preservation Specialist position will become a Planner Two position in Historic Preservation.
But it will, it will talk, it will somewhere, say Historic Preservation.
That's correct.
Okay, okay, well, that's good. Giving me heart failure over here. Some of the largest pieces of... Oh, and then I had the question, I know we had made the War Memorial slash, slash art...
The Public Art and War Memorials budget line, is that what you're...
Yes.
Yes.
Has that money been used on any war memorials?
It has, yes, and so we spent, and I, I...
Because I've gotten questioned on that, and I says, well, I hope they're still using the money for war memorials, both and the art.
Mm-hmm, yes, so we, we actually spent, I believe it was $73,000, you know, in 2019 on public art and war memorials. The, you know, that was more than our $50,000 allocation, but it was, it was because we had some prior year money that we spent down, that, you know, that budget line is, is, you know, we're, we're close to, we're close to fully utilizing that, so that's why we're glad to see that that is in the 2020 budget as well.
Well, it's supposed to be in each of the budgets.
Yeah.
That's, that's what I had in there.
And, and, and yes, that...
If you thought it needed upped a little bit, I'm sure Bill could find a little bit extra money to do that.
Okay. And so, so yes, that is going towards war, both war memorials and our other responsibilities relative to the city's public art collection.
And there's a lot, because we have new art, old art, and the war memorials, there's just so many of them, and the missing war memorials also that we need to put somewhere.
Yeah, we very, very recently did three war memorials, one in Carrick, one in the West End, and a World War, World War I memorial, which we did work to in the fall, and then I think there is, there's one on Pius Street and the Main Memorial, which we intend to have completed by the end of the year.
On what street?
Uh, I'm not sure of what street, the, one is the Pius Street, they have an all wars, war memorial, in the South Side slopes, and then the Main Memorial, I'm not sure what street that's located on.
Okay, 'cause the city's responsible to take care of those that, that, uh, there's no one taking care of them anymore, and I just want to make sure we have money there. If we need to put a little bit more money in there, I'm sure Bill could find it. Right, Bill?
We'll do our best. Just to clarify something, the majority of funds were not in people, it was actually in professional services with close to $100,000. When you start talking about a 10% reduction...
Okay.
It was $411,000 difference, about $100,000 of that was, was money being transferred to IMP for the GIS folks moving over on the professional service line.
Oh, okay, okay.
But the, there's another $300,000-some dollars in, in professional services that aren't in the city planning budget this year, and I think that's what brings...
It's just over the years, I've seen city planning just dwindle, and hopefully that's not happening, because the neighborhoods still need planners.
We agree, and the staff, you know, other than the GIS, the changes to GIS, I mean, you know, the, the position is relatively stable, I think we've, you know, there's one new, you know, one new position beyond the position swaps, like Bill said, a big change was to professional services, which are usually where we're hiring consultants. We're hoping with some of the guides and some of the other work that we have, that, you know, there's some of that that can be taken care of through some of the policy guidance that we've created over the past year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate everybody being here so late, I'm noting that we're coming on 5 o'clock. So, I am concerned also at the budget decrease, and I think that at least the three of you on council are concerned about that as well. And I'll note, Councilwoman, because you bring this up every year, that the URA's budget we just saw this morning is $10 million for personnel, and so that is, you know, our planning department at less than half. And one of the things that I brought up to the mayor kind of an hour later was, you know, when we're talking about sorting out under his new Economic Development Director, I think he put, you know, equity and planning and a couple of other, Land Bank and a couple of other things that would, kind of for him are, are all economic development activities. A lot of them overlap with land use as well, and I would say that if we're going to look for greater cooperation and so not duplicating efforts, that planning capacity is one of them. I was actually concerned to hear the URA say that they wanted to do planning around our vacant properties, because I thought, that's just not your job. Sorry, that doesn't belong in your budget. That is something that is city, it's by, it's by definition, the municipal, you know, authority rests here at this body, and not with the unelected board of the URA. So, while I was very happy to hear about some of the activities that they're endeavoring, and I respect that they've shifted their mission towards really focusing on investments in Pittsburgh residents and small businesses and microloans, and a lot of programs that I was really enthusiastic about, I think that's one area where I would rather budget planning to do work around whether it's the impact of vacant properties on sustainability, and we've talked about them, and all of the years that we've been talking about the vacant properties, right? We've acknowledged that there's recreational use that may be available, there's green infrastructure and stormwater impacts, there's really zoning that we should be revisiting around this, and I just have to say, well, I have the zoning director here, that in the post agenda about vacant properties a few weeks ago, I said, what is this, shadow zoning? You can't just put the URA's name next to 7,000 properties, because somebody in the administration somewhere that no one can see, and the discussion wasn't at this table, you can't, you just can't do that. Like, who gave you the authority to do that? So, I'll continue to raise that as an issue, because to me, that is de facto land use control. You've literally 7,000 properties, there's a lot in a city of 140,000 properties. So, I think that needs to be a really robust discussion, that's a public, transparent discussion, and to me, that's a, that's a land use discussion that I think should be guided by city planning and not by other offices. So, and here we see that the Open Space Specialist, I didn't ask you about that one specifically, was that also moved to a Planner Two, or is that an actually removed position?
It was, it was another position that was changed to a Planner Two, yes.
Thank you, I didn't, I might have asked you that, but I didn't note it here, so at least we still are staffing that, but we could be staffing them more robustly. When, when this council wants to see more historic preservation, with Councilwoman Harris has brought up in many different budget hearings, when we want to see greater equity, when we want to see, talk about investments in housing and really report out to the public how well we're doing, to me, those things are fundamentally, land use decisions are a big part of what impacts the city that we live in. And so, I would like to see planning take a very active role in each and every one of those discussions, so that we're at this moment of massive real estate activity, both buying and selling a property and building of things, we need to be planning more and not less. That's my plug. So, I haven't really asked you any questions, but again, it has been, it's been a very long day of budget hearings. Is there anything that you, we didn't hear from our Director of Sustainability, is there anything that you wanted to throw in, Director Irvin?
Uh, no, I mean, I just concur with what Director Dash has said and would agree with the statements of both you and Councilwoman Harris.
So, I know, I know, we're probably all eager to get out at the end of the day here. Councilwoman Harris, I'll let you kind of have one more chance before we recess. Thank you. If, and I'll just say, since we kind of did have a very quick hearing, that if members of the public want to contact us, you can always contact us at our council offices, we each have email addresses, and we're happy to get your questions and respond to them, and we can try to find the answers as we continue to go through our budgeting process. So, I am reading an announcement. Director?
Yes, if you want to announce.
So, we're going to recess this budget hearing, and we reconvene, well, tomorrow, Tuesday, December 3rd, we'll first have our regular meeting of council at 10:00 a.m., it's a final vote, regular meeting, and then we'll reconvene the budget hearing at 1:30 p.m. tomorrow with the Department of Human Resources chaired by Ms. Harris, the Carnegie Library chaired by Mr. Kraus, and the Oakland Business Improvement District and Pittsburgh Downtown Partnerships, which are both business improvement districts chaired by Mr. Burgess. So, I am just going to, do I need a motion to recess? All right. We are recessed.